Yeah. So you pick up these three. I was hard enough getting that. No, it's the, the, uh, the use chart is in the bylaw. It's in the. But in, you can go online. When you go online.
Oh, it's not with the rest of the bylaw.
Is there an easy place to find it?
Yeah.
It's at the, if you go to chapter thirty-nine, at the very top, there are two PDFs.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the main, the main thing down here is the swimmer. And again, we've heard from some, but I needed to hear from the rest of us. There'll be a no, it's a no use, correct. And it's also a lower height, and it's a fa- lower height, and it's a twenty percent reduction in ground cover compared to what they have. So it's, you know, scaling it back for a country district, because the R twenty is really found district, not a federal.
No, um, I can, I will, I'll just.
Does this, does this increase the ground cover that's now, that would take those down? And again, we, we've asked, like, bring us some proof that people out there don't want fools. There's a group right in there. What if we heard from a windmill?
Can everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna call the meeting of the board of selectmen for January thirteenth to order. Tonight, we have a workshop meeting. So it's a little different than our normal meetings. We have less items on their agenda, no public hearings, and we are in casual attire. So, uh, first thing we'll do is accept the, uh, agenda. If anyone has no problem with it, we'll accept it as written. Announcements, Libby?
I got it, Libby. I guess we, uh.
Just that the meeting is videotaped and audio-recorded for everyone in the audience. Uh, the first item for discussion in our workshop tonight is a discussion regarding bike routes in and out of town. Who's gonna start us off? Mr. Burns with this, or? Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, while he's getting ready there, or we're getting the thing up, um, just to remind you, I think this is probably in your packet, but at a recent meeting, the board wanted to understand better the location of any existing bike routes, how they're identified, what the pros and cons are, the location of any future bike routes, this is all in and out of town, when they're scheduled, how much they're estimated to cost, are they in a plan, things like that, and other feasible options that could get bikes in and out of town more sle- more safely than perhaps now, if that's something we can even assess. Um, they could potentially be implemented for this coming summer and what those pros and cons are. And I think Mr. Burns has, um, just what, what this is.
We, we found something with a PowerPoint presentation, so we're gonna hope there's no, uh, unwanted magic with the presentation, so, um, anyway, I'll walk it through you. Uh, in your packet, this is an abbreviated presentation I'm gonna give, by the way. It's thirteen slides, much more reduced from the, what was included in your packet, but I think what was included in your packet is valuable information, um, and just helps out with the education of the board. Uh, what was included are the description of the goals and objectives for, by the MPNDC, which also serves as the goals and objectives of the master plan, which is, uh, what was mentioned is basically a strategic plan for the town, um, and the plan basically outlines what those strategies are, uh, what I'd like to, so I included those in the packet, as well as some proposed routes that were recently discussed over the summer, uh, uh, and a, and a memorandum from traffic safety with recommendations based on the, uh, that proposed route. And, uh, again, like, there's a, uh, the presentation summarizes all of the initiatives, past, present, and future, uh, of bike pedestrian improvements in and out of downtown. Um, and I, I think it must be said that I'm going into a little bit of a history lesson with this, uh, just because it was mentioned that not a lot of work has been done in the last ten, fifteen years. There's been no projects, and the capital improvements that we submitted were basically recycled from previous years, and, um, frankly, it was wrong. Uh, so I'd like to just go through what those, uh, um, history lesson was. It's broken down, uh, first, I'll just show you the, the existing map. There's about thirty-three miles of, of, uh, bike path, uh, on the island now, which is, uh, the most any community maintains, uh, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Uh, so, uh, uh, and there's been added since two thousand and four, uh, almost eight miles, so about a, almost a, uh, almost a twenty-five percent expansion of the existing system in the last ten years or so. And there's, uh, you know, almost thirty percent planned for, for future implementation. Uh, and these are all strictly bike facilities, not necessarily talking about the sidewalk infrastructure, which we talked about, uh, about later. Um, as far as the, uh, presentation of improvements go, I'm gonna break this down into geographies of the downtown. I think that it might be easier for the board to understand, because there's a lot of discussion about the approaches from the s- north of town, and the west of town, and the south of town. So I'm gonna focus on that, uh, the improvements in the downtown area, because it's, the downtown's important, but also talk about the different approaches, uh, from around town, uh, as part of this, uh, past, present, and future initiatives summary. Uh, again, here's highlighted in purple, some of the paths have been extended, uh, in the last ten years, and what's in red here is the, uh, the approved, uh, bike route that's, uh, existing now, that's signed, and, uh, on different maps that the, uh, tourists may use, uh, in the summertime, but, uh, anyone can actually use, uh, with the stickers and the signage and stuff. So just running through, uh, as far as past initiatives in the downtown area, I mentioned there are, there were, uh, bike route wayfinding improvements, uh, stickers and signage, uh, that's been implemented through a combination of work from the visitor services and Young's Bike Shop. Uh, there's been, uh, uh, they're, they're faded now, but a, a testing of bike route stencils that, uh, will be started up again, uh, soon, and hopefully be maintained into the future. But there was an evaluation of bike route stencils as a, as a way of enhancing the wayfinding, uh, for bicyclists in and out of town. And there's also been a, a number of improvements for, for, for bike parking, uh, adding, adding bike racks, uh, finding a bike rack that looks attractive in the downtown area, and, and, uh, and, uh, you know, one of the reasons why downtown is nice and not a, uh, and not including anything that would be a nice or, uh, added amenity, address a problem, and have it be aesthetically pleasing. Um, and lastly, uh, there's, uh, work by the roads and right-of-way committee, which they'll go into, uh, Alan Reinhardt will, about the survey work of sidewalk conditions, uh, in the downtown area. So that's work that had been done in the past in the downtown, uh, north of town, uh, there's an extension of the, the Cliff Road bike path, about a half a mile from Crooked Land to Sherburne Turnpike. That was a way of improving bike flow from the northern approach. There's a picture of Selectman Atherton in there from five years ago. You look just as good now as you do then, Mr. Atherton, so.
You're gonna go far, Mike.
Any compliments I can squeeze in, that's, uh. Let's all focus on that. Okay, so, uh, those are the improvements in the north side of town. As far as the west side of town, uh, there were, uh, what's on, the map on the left is very hard to read, but basically, it's a, a list of, of alignments that could be used for bike traffic from the Quaker Cemetery, uh, Maticat Road, using Quaker Road and Prospect Street down to where the mill is. So that corridor there was, uh, it's, it, it, it really needs to be improved to accommodate bike pedestrian traffic more. Uh, that evaluation was done in two thousand and ten. Uh, also, what has been done is the, uh, resurfacing of the Maticat Bike Path, which is, uh, there's a picture there, and then the implementation of the Hummock Pond Road Bike Path. That's something else that's been done very, very recently, uh, is an accomplishment, improving tra- uh, bike pedestrian connection in and out of town. Uh, as far as the south side of town, this is the area, say, along Pleasant Street and Orange Street, uh, there's, uh, I could go into a long history of the mid-island area, uh, I won't, just to say that there has been some streetscape improvements that have been implemented now. And there was some conceptual work for how to actually get bicyclists in and out of, uh, between the downtown area and the rotary, uh, using a combination of roads. And, uh, out of that work came a recommendation for, uh, widening out Orange and Washington Streets to accommodate, uh, uh, accept bike lanes, uh, along those corridors, as well as a, an improvement of the old railroad causeway, uh, here, uh, between Orange Street and the end of Washington Street Extension to, uh, to accommodate bike traffic. And this is, uh, something that's been, again, something that's been done in the past, and, and it's gonna be implemented in now and into the future. For the downtown area for present conditions, uh, there's a photo of installation of bike bollards. Again, this is one of these, uh, attractive pieces of equipment added to the street infrastructure to address a concern, a problem, and that's for bike parking. Those were installed with, uh, uh, I, I would say a grant from, uh, Remain Nantucket to help address that problem. There is a phase one of sidewalk improvements. Again, those improvements were identified through a combination of roads and right-of-way committee, and, and as well as some outreach to other committees within the town. Phase one of that, improving the connections between the, uh, ferry terminals, uh, as well as going further to the connections between the town parking lot and Children's Beach to get into a, a wider berth. But this is basically a, a harbor front improvements, uh, something you could, uh, probably call an esplanade project for along the harbor front of bike pedestrian circulation between these areas. But that's something that's in the Capitol, uh, uh, plan as a request for this year. Um, and then lastly, uh, some of you may have attended the, the Worcester Polytech presentation on looking at accessibility of sidewalks, not just the condition, but how accessible they are for, for those of, with mobility needs. Uh, so Worcester Polytech did a, a breakdown and evaluation of that, which, uh, staff helped out with. But that's another, uh, present initiative that's been done very, very recently for the downtown. North of town, not a lot, other than there are some sidewalk improvements, basically from the, uh, end of the extension of the Cliff Road Bike Path at Sherburne Turnpike, down towards the vicinity of North Liberty Lane, uh, North Liberty Street, uh, a sidewalk along a section of North Liberty that right now does not have one, uh, another section of sidewalk along Westchester Street, uh, where there's a missing gap. Um, so those are areas that are, right now, we've, we've identified as needing to be, uh, improved to accommodate pedestrian traffic more. Uh, so that's a, something that we, that exists now. Uh, also, what exists now is, uh, on the west side of town, uh, staff is working on the extension of the, uh, Hummock Pond Bike Path, uh, basically from the intersection of, uh, Hummock Pond and Milk Street going on into town. Um, there's the, uh, the Mill Hill Path, which is part of the Willen Hill subdivision, that's, uh, something that, again, should be ready for the summer of two thousand and sixteen. And again, uh, to belabor the point of the sidewalk improvements, there are additional sidewalk improvements in the, uh, vicinity of downtown, uh, along the western side of the downtown area. And then there's the proposed historic bike route that was reviewed by the board, uh, in the spring and early summer of this year, um, that it's been, been, recommendation had been made by the committees and didn't, hasn't yet been, uh, approved by the, the board of selectmen.
Mike, just, just, just trying to be clear, on, uh, Joy Street, um, the red going off to the left, yeah, that one there, was that in fifteen or sixteen?
Are we talking Milk Street right here?
No, back up on, um. Yeah, that one, right. When's that scheduled for?
It's in the.
I wasn't sure the red and the red above, so.
Sure, what's, what's in red are needed sidewalk improvements. We've identified this as need, included in the plan for an improvement. It's not in the two thousand and seventeen request, it will be in a future year, a request for sidewalk improvements. Uh, right now, we're, we're, there were about ten or eleven million dollars in overall sidewalk improvements identified. What's requested this year of town meeting is one point five million of that ten, eleven million dollar in total projects. So it's, it's a, it's a, we're calling it a phase one, and I guess the idea is that we're future phases. That is not a phase one, no.
That section's not in phase one.
Correct. Uh, as far as the south side of town, uh, some of the, uh, streetscape along Pleasant Street is starting to be implemented. Uh, there are other improvements, again, the, uh, the future phases of the, uh, the in-town bike path along Orange Street and Washington Street, those are included in the count, the town's capital plan, uh, for this year. And, uh, again, to belabor the point, uh, there are other sidewalk improvements, uh, in, in that area that have been identified and will be improved i- as future improvements, uh, future phases.
So, Mike, again, just to be clear, the Washington Street one and FY seventeen, is the street gonna be widened?
Uh, that's the concept, yes. Widened out to have four-foot bike lanes on either side of the roadway, and that'll.
And the town owns enough space to do that now?
Not necessarily. There probably need to be slivers taking, uh, you know, a foot, one to three feet, taken from a, a budding properties. Maybe in some areas that, and in some areas, it's, there's plenty of room, but there will be some right-of-way needs.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to get that, yep.
And Mike, real quick, just on Sparks, uh, I, I know there was talk about getting that improved, there was kind of a work between the Stop and Shop and Boys and Girls Club to improve that for access. Do you know when that's slated to be completed, you know, or widened or improved?
I do not, other than there's funding that has been cobbled together recently to, uh, implement that. But I don't believe there's a schedule on actually advertising it or, or implementing it just yet, other than the money's been cobbled together to actually do the work. And to wrap it up, uh, we'll go to the future, uh, areas, and this is basically what, uh, the, the board is desiring, is, is some input on the, uh, the bike routes in and out of town, uh, with some problems identified for addressing those. From the northern approach, again, Cliff Road is essentially the, the main access from the north side of town, the cliff area. There's some on-street parking conflicts. In your packet, there's some pictures that illustrate the issue of cars parking on the sidewalk and into the road that narrow the road down somewhat, which, uh, it's, it's an obstruction for, for a clean flow of traffic. That's a conflict. It's, uh, if that wasn't there, perhaps it would be a better environment for biking along Cliff Road. I would say absolutely it would be, but, uh, there's reasons why parking was removed and then put back along Cliff Road. There's a demand for parking. Uh, along the west side of town, uh, what's in purple are the proposed bike routes, not necessarily in the, the town's official bike route, but proposed bike routes that, uh, again, there's some parking conflicts along sections of Milk Street that I think, you know, everybody's kind of aware of, from basically the Civil War Monument up to, along Milk Street, up to the intersection of, uh, Prospect and Quaker. If those on-street parking spaces weren't there, perhaps you would have a cleaner flow of traffic for vehicles and bicyclists without having the, uh, the, the road narrowed down to one lane for all those different uses. Perhaps that would be safer and more convenient and more efficient. Uh, other areas, the proposed bike route, historic bike route, I'm showing this in blue going into town, there were some, uh, conflicts that are identified with the board. There's some right-of-way conflicts along Prospect Street, the idea of widening Prospect Street out for bike lanes just to get it to the Mill Street, there were some, some right-of-way issues in order to, to realize that improvement. There's also some on-street parking conflicts at the intersection of Pleasant Street, um, and High Street, and that vicinity, there's approximately seven on-street parking spaces that should be removed to, in order to have a, again, another, a, a, a clean, unobstructed flow of bicycle traffic in and out of town along that corridor. And lastly, along the southern approach of town, again, what's highlighted here is those on-street parking spaces on Pleasant Street that don't really help out, and then, uh, on-street parking down by the Stop and Shop that, uh, some may feel, uh, doesn't contribute to an efficient flow of bike pedestrian vehicle flow, and could provide, provide some opportunity for conflict along those flows. So that's a very picky thing to pick on, but it's a conflict.
But the, the concept there is it slows down traffic a little bit with the parking there, so it's.
Exactly.
You know, it accomplishes something, but in a different way.
Exactly. In that situation, the conflicts actually slow down the traffic, so you get a, another, uh, outcome, so that creates a safer environment. Again, I'm trying to be picky and just pick on things that could be improved, but, so these are the three approaches, from the south of town, west of town, north of town, uh, and the routes that have been, uh, proposed, and, uh, the routes that are, they're signed and, and, uh, and documented now. Uh, if there's any questions about some of these, I've, I've identified some potentials for improving those, uh, and some that need vote by the board, because again, these aren't, that will require some capital funding to, to implement them. So, uh, if you have any questions about this, I'm, I'm here to answer those. Thank you.
Do, well, sure, go ahead.
Go ahead, Rick. I was just gonna ask you a question.
Back to the, uh, Prospect Street one that you talked about, Mike, and, and you said there were, yeah, the circle there, you said there were conflicts, I, I think you meant from the end of the bike path to the corner there?
Uh, right-of-way conflicts.
And what, and what are those? I mean, what do you mean?
On the northern side of Prospect Street, there's, the, basically, the layout of Prospect Street isn't wide enough to accept a sidewalk, two vehicle lanes, and two four-foot shoulders for bike lanes. Uh, there's not enough road width for that. So there, there's some trees and some curbing, and, and there are houses right close to the road, but essentially, their property, I mean, the buildings wouldn't be impacted, but the property line is, uh, you know, you need an extra, uh, two feet, essentially, to, to implement that strategy.
It would require some takings, is what you're saying.
Absolutely, and there, and there's, there are trees in the way that would need to be moved.
But didn't we see a plan a while back to implement a bike lane right there?
A sidewalk. Uh, there, there's an existing area, five feet along the, of the sort, of the southern curb line of Prospect Street to four or five-foot wide sidewalk. That was always the improvement, uh, not necessarily a ten-foot wide bike path, which is just really not the room there.
Right, but was.
So a sidewalk improvement.
But it wasn't sort of the discussion at the time that, um, the five-foot sidewalk would, might in reality function two ways. Even though it isn't ideal, it might be better than what exists today. I mean, that, that's what I thought I heard, and that's why I thought it was still under consideration to at least do the five, the five feet, but I guess not. I mean, I'm trying to understand why not.
Or maybe another way was to have.
Or is it?
A, a bike, you know, pedestrians on one side, and then that gives you more space for, or like you have a brick sidewalk on one side, and then you have a lane, four-foot bike lane on both sides.
And there was the idea, was basically to not have bicyclists put into the roadway, or just thrown into traffic, the way some people, um, have, have characterized it. But widen the road out to where there's a dedicated lane for bicycle traffic going one direction, and another dedicated lane going the opposite direction. That creates a safer environment. There's no conflicts of traffic, there's no sharing of the road. Uh, to, to accomplish that, you need to widen the road out, you know, eight feet, or, or more, if there's great issues. Uh, so that, that was, that was the need, uh, essentially, if we were gonna progress that as a capital project, that needed a, a vote and support of the board, there was very contentious about the removal of on-street parking that went along with that, so it's, uh, it, it is where it is now.
Do you, do you support that idea? Do you think that makes sense?
Uh, as what's described in the, uh, the memo from traffic safety, that's, that's what we support. Um, if you wanna realize that as a route and communicate that to the public.
You, traffic safety and you.
Removal of the on-street parking spaces and the widening out of, of Prospect Street would be required. Um, that's, that's, that's the recommendation, if that's the desired path to go, um, but, you know, that's, it needs this board, board support.
Understood, but I'm asking if you personally think it's a good idea to, to go up that way?
With those other conditions, correct.
If we put all that in, you'd, you'd support it, yeah, okay.
I don't really get a vote, I get a.
But, but we could just fix the situation on Prospect Street.
Well, that's sort of my, my, you come to the end of the, uh, hard bike path now, and people are on it, and then they, if they wanna continue up towards Maticat or wherever, they've gotta go into the street.
Isn't the new, the mill path that's gonna go into the subdivision gonna take them from there, up that way and around it, and avoid Prospect?
I think, I think that's the idea, Bobby, but it, no.
And then you could get onto the, you could go right to the, to the Cisco Bike Path, and you'll be able to, eventually, they're gonna cut across, what is it, um?
Wind Street.
Yeah, Wind Street.
Wind Street, yeah.
So that, that'll help, and, you know, ho- hopefully next year we'll have a capital, you know, I, I know on capital programs, we, um, approve funding for the, um, you know, the taking of Wind Street to proceed with that, assuming it passes town meeting, we can proceed with the design and the construction of that.
And that'll be a beautiful ride along this new, yeah, and through along the edge of the cemetery, and then across, it'll be pretty.
So, so it seems that the choice presented is, um, sort of going all the way on Prospect Street, or if that's too difficult, then we have a bit of a time delay until the rest of the path over Mill Hill and down Wind Street is accomplished. I mean, I think that's what you're, because that'll, that could take some time.
That's in the works, though.
I'm not saying it's not in the works, Libby, but.
The problem is.
I just wanna be direct, Bobby, you know?
This is a little deceiving, because it shows this little blue arrow, and then it takes a right down Mill Street. But it, you're still gonna have the same problem here that I see, is that you're dumping that bike traffic from Surfside or from Milestone into a busy street.
Right, yeah.
Where if they go up and around, you know.
So, so the idea is, even aside from turning right there, if they wanna keep going straight, you're right back in a narrow street again.
Right.
And if you haven't continued the sidewalk all the way to Milk Street, maybe you haven't accomplished what you need to accomplish.
And if you're trying to go all the way to Milk Street, those houses are right on the road, the poles are right in the sidewalk.
It's bad enough for cars.
Right. Yeah. And that is the main route to the dump, so it gets a lot of traffic. From that side of town's the only way to get there. Changing off of this a little bit, Orange Street, you're saying you'd put a bike, you'd, you'd mark that with a, uh, with basically paint, and have a, and have a bike lane down Orange, is that?
Uh, what's section of Orange, the one-way section or the two-way section?
One-way section, yeah.
The one-way section, that's, that's being recommended for, uh, sharrows, uh, basically stenciling the, uh, the road, uh, to inform drivers that there's bike, bicyclists that are gonna be sharing that route, uh, between the parked cars on the street and, you know, the trees on the other side of the road. So it's basically a shared corridor for going out of town, 'cause it's a one-way road, obviously.
But it's, it, it. It seems like, sorry, 'cause I wrote, I, after we had this conversation, I, I went there, and I, and looking at it, it almost seems wide enough to put a four-foot bike lane between where the cars park and the road. You know, people would still drive on it sorta, but you wouldn't park on it, and it almost seems like you could do that.
And a lot of areas you can, absolutely. There's some areas where it necks down to where that would, it would get a little complicated, that's probably why it hasn't been done. But yeah, it's, uh, there, there's some opportunities to do that, and maybe you shift the curb lines, or I.
Yeah, that's, 'cause I.
Right, right now, it's a.
That to me would make, that, that to me makes, makes getting out down Orange a lot easier. 'Cause my concerns is, you just, I wrote a couple of things, is the in-town portion of this, no matter where we go right now, I bike every day, it's unsafe, it's, you know, people with families, it's just, you're taking your life in your own hands, you know? So that's, so I think, you know, Bobby said it the best when we talked about this last two times ago, was we need to find a safe way to get people from in-town to the beginning of the paths, which are all great, once you get, once you get there. So that's the goal, and how do you, you know, and I think we're all kind of in agreement on that, how do you do that? And, and I think it's a pretty big priority, and I'm glad we've come back to it. And so if you can do that on Orange, uh, here's another question, have you thought about it for sort of making Cliff Road and Westchester one-way, or Pleasant Street one-way? 'Cause then you would have a, you know, in the, the thin streets we have, you can't make Prospect one-way, 'cause there's, there's no way. But some of these others, you might be able to go one-way, one-direction, one-way back, and then you'd have room for parking and a bike lane, you'd take no parking away, have a bike lane in the traffic. So I was wondering if that's ever been analyzed or thought about?
Pleasant Street, yes. Uh, Cliff Road and some of these other streets, n- no. Uh, and, uh, well, I, I say no, but essentially, I guess in nineteen ninety-six, there was a, a, a traffic study done that kinda looked at some one-way scenarios, and basically, it just, uh, be- because of the truck routes and the need to, to get in and out of town with, with large vehi- yeah, that just wasn't practical, so it was, it was dismissed and never wa- really was realized, even through subsequent traffic studies that were done, it just basically dismissed using like Sparks Avenue, it was like a one-way, and an Orange Street, uh, in front of like, say, the Marine Home Center. Not have that be one-way at all, just because it would just impact movement of freight.
Yeah, no, but we've now, we've, we've sort of corrected the truck route, like the Cliff Road was the, you know, what do you call it, the, I'm sorry, the secondary truck route. You say we've collected, corrected the truck route, which we have, but when that extension from, was it Duck Pond or whatever it's called there?
Goose Pond.
Goose Pond across, to get those, get the bikes out of those three corners, they, on the truck route, and onto that back road. I mean, yeah, they're gonna dump out onto Orange Street, and yeah, Orange Street's busy, but it'll be, there'll be a bike lane on each side, and they will have to cross Orange Street. But that's the most dangerous as far as I'm concerned, those three bends in that road, when these trucks are coming around and cars coming around and cars backed up, if we can get them to go straight down Washington Street, and then down Washington Street Extension, and across, across the creeks there, it's gonna make a world of difference. And it'll get everybody out to, to the rest of the bike pass, and if, if the other one goes in up here by Cemetery, now you can pretty much circumvent the island around, with the exception of, of, uh, of Cliff Road. You gotta figure out how you're gonna get, get them from Cliff Road back to town. And maybe you bring them down Lincoln Circle and down Stone, the Stone Road there into the jetties, and not have them come down the bottom end of Cliff Road. But, I don't know, I mean, that's. Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'm just, 'cause, you know, one of my thoughts, looking at it, because Cliff Road, it isn't even just, it's, it, it's a bike thing, but it's also, you can't even use the sidewalks. The sidewalks are either parked on, or they're.
The sidewalks are either parked on or they're, they're full of, uh, telephone poles. So people, if they wanna walk up Cliff Road, they go back and forth through the traffic. You know, I have pictures, cause I, for some other reasons, but, you know, people with, you know, families and people with baby carriages and everything else, they can't even walk up Cliff Road. It's, it's, and, and so how do you have to save, how do you fix that? You know, and make it safe, you know, and so one of my thoughts was, do you go out, is outbound up to, is it one-way up to Liberty and is West Chester one-way back in and you fix two at once? I don't know. I don't know what, I'd have to put on the computer and see what it generated traffic wise.
Yeah, I think if you implemented the sidewalk improvement basically from Sherburne Turnpike to North Liberty Street, that would give you a continuous sidewalk connection. If there was a solution to the on-street parking and there was a way to relocate that on-street parking to some other location or just remove the on-street parking and figure it'll take care of itself. That gets rid of those conflicts. Uh, and, but you'd have a pedestrian connection. There's really no room for bike lanes along Cliff Road along this section and I, I don't know if the street infrastructure like a West Chester and North Liberty Street, if there was like a fork in the road, say, at North Liberty and to go into town, you used a combination of Liberty and West Chester and Cliff Road to get out of town. I, I don't think that infrastructure could take it.
Yeah, North Liberty again, is too thin, you know, regardless. And that, and that sorta has to be, I, I'm looking at that as that has to be two-way. You know, so I don't know, it just, it's sort of
But, but I think what you're suggesting that is maybe, maybe there's some things we can do, you know, in, in regards to parking on sidewalks to maybe make that easier for folks, at the very least, the pedestrians walking on the sidewalks.
Well, I'm, I'm not even, I'm not even into the sidewalk issue yet, I'm just saying, there may be ways to tackle this that by making certain roads one-way that are thin, that as long as it doesn't impact traffic, they may be able to get the same amount, you may be able to put, take that thin road, have the cars fit, the parking fit and the bikes fit. And just not go two ways on certain roads and if you can figure out which ones of those will, will work properly, there's an outbound and inbound and it's not just the cliff, you might be able to do it in the Pleasant Street area, uh, you know, one going in, one, you know, Fair, Fair Street going in and Pleasant going out or something, that's, that, that, then you're talking about bike paths that just are costing you paint. You're not losing parking spaces and you're paying for paint and painting. So I'm just sort of saying, has that been looked at for that reason?
I just wanted to note that, um, it's not used all the time, but on occasion, and it's been getting used more often than not in the last year, Cliff Road is used as the reverse truck route. Um, and so making that one-way would make directing truck route traffic that way difficult, so just keep that in mind.
No, no, I under, I understand that. When we were fixing the truck route, they were coming through there, it was, and it was, it was a death zone. I'm surprised someone didn't get killed when it happened, the guys were going to the boat at like sixty miles an hour and they didn't slow down till they hit the curb, you know, forty, forty or fifty miles an hour, till they got to the curb at Cliff. It was like sort of where you have the circle. They would go by there in the morning so fast you couldn't believe it. And there were car, you know, you have cars screeching and it was, it's a mess.
Yeah, but that's a straight road that probably has the turning radiuses and stuff to handle the freight traffic, one that's needed in emergency cases. I, I really don't believe that North Liberty Street and West Chester
Oh, they can't, no.
They, they just wouldn't be able to be used as the alternative truck route, so that's why it wasn't looked at.
No, they couldn't.
Any other questions?
So Mike, I guess, I guess just to, to summarize, you're asking us to move forward on a couple of different recommendations as far as, um, just to be clear, you know, approving the historic in-town path, which we support, or route and marking Orange Street for a, a lane or a, you know, stenciling and, and is there anything else I'm missing? Or just, I'm just curious what, what the recommendation is?
Uh, I, I was asked to give a presentation of the, the initiatives to go in and out of town.
We just kinda have to pick, you know.
There, like I said, I didn't pull anything that wasn't documented in a regional transportation plan. Every one of these projects that I've discussed here have a reference number and are in a book that not a lot of people read, because it's boring, but at least they're referenced in a plan that's approved by a board.
Yeah.
That's, it's, and within a budget, that's physically constrained. So there is a plan, that's, that's the first thing. So I'm just basically doing a book report of what's in that, that deal basically with the routes in and out of town.
Right. And so, so one of the, so I guess just to, to finalize Bobby, one of those recommendations was to be to mark the current route or maybe improve, improve the markings, you know, that had been talked about a little bit. Is, is that clear or?
Uh, the, the stenciling of the route, yeah, if the board would like to support that, especially these proposed bike routes, stenciling those, uh, that, that would be great if the board would take action on that. Uh, the historic bike route, um, I, I think I spoke prematurely, that's actually not in the plan, because it, it didn't have action or support from a board. Um, but if you would like to have that implemented, uh, uh, I mean, that's, it, the ball's always been right here, uh, to get action from the board on that, cause I, I can give you a recommendation, but it just needs to have an approval by the board.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you Chairman, for, my name is David Gagnon, I'm the Executive Director of the Mariah Mitchell Association. We obviously have our, uh, we're a big advocate of bike trails, I use them all the time. Um, on Milk Street, we have our observatories there, both of them. Um, we use them, uh, all year round. In the summertime, we have almost three thousand visitors that use them, starting around eight-thirty in the evening till about ten o'clock at night. Our only, well, we have two concerns, one is that if any of the poles are moved over, there's any lighting, that that lighting be set up in a way that doesn't interfere with our work that we do and at this point, uh, we've had some, um, the town has worked with us in Verizon and we've put some, uh, shades on those lights and that's worked out well, we just wanna hope that any, if there's any future lights, that there directs the light down, so it doesn't interfere with the research that we do and the public observations. The second thing is that because we have all those visitors, we do use the parking along the road on Milk Street where I believe the bike path will be. And that's the concern is that any, um, any work that's done there doesn't, uh, is at least considering the, the, um, the historical use almost half a century now where we've used that space and people have parked probably about twenty cars at a maximum um, along that, uh, along that way there. But once again, it's at night, it's not during the day, obviously. Um, we're only there in the evening, so usually around eight-thirty to ten. So I'd appreciate any consideration there to make sure that we can continue to offer this, um, this service to the, uh, to the community and to the visitors of Nantucket. Thank you for giving me a moment.
Just to be sure, you're talking, the observatory is, is opposite the, yeah, okay.
They're built in that section now, actually. It's the one we had
It's the one we just talked about, right?
At the county.
Well, here's a, cause they park, right now they park sort of across next to the cemetery, correct?
That's correct.
And then they come across the street.
That's right.
So we're gonna take that space and we're gonna build a bike path there.
Right.
Now, how much of the land do you own? If we were, if, is there a way to cut out parking spaces adjacent to your property?
We own very little land along that side.
Right.
Yeah, it's a pretty small lot, it's pretty much the two observatories and go out maybe thirty feet on either side and come down to the road, so.
Because, because I could see
Yeah.
If we're gonna use the part of the bike side, bike path as a parking. Yeah, which you can too, which we, we wanna say, I would, I would love, maybe you can do it, but I would like to set up something where you don't have to have, you know, cars parking on bike paths, that's, people are still biking in the evenings. So, you know, I think we have to think that one through.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Burns?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, that has been discussed and there's some opportunity to, to clear on the observatory side of Milk Street to create some parking spaces there, it's, it's, uh, you know, and I'm thinking in the vicinity of ten parking spaces. Uh, there may be need, or demand for, for more than that. Um, but that's, that's what can be done on, on the observatory side of the road. Beyond that, it's, uh, we looked at different combinations of having people park in the cemetery, but again, that's, you know, the cemetery probably doesn't think that's a great idea, so that's, it, you, you do have a conundrum there and it's
You know, it's no different, every time you have a funeral, there's gonna be two hundred cars on that bike path, so. Depending who, who it is that's getting buried, I mean, we've all been there and we've all parked there, so.
Hopefully for a short time.
Yeah.
So, so is, is in the plan already to do the, um, kind of clearing you're talking about in front of the observatory? I mean, is that a done deal, so to speak?
It, it, it's a note to do, um, so that's one of the concessions, I suppose, that we were, um, gonna include in, and it's not a, a great deal of work, other than just clearing some, some little like shrubs.
It sounds like sufficient mitigation though, it helped, you know, it improves the situation.
Well, um, I have no problem with the stenciling. I think it's a great idea, it does remind people when they're driving that they're on, not on the road alone. Although we have gotten pushback in the past, remember the, the yellow lines on the Cliff Road bike path and how much of a a flack that raised, so, you know, I, the minute we start painting little bikes on the road, I'm sure someone's gonna write a letter to the paper and complain about how we're
Now, the yellow lines on the Cliff, which ones do you mean?
Remember when they first built the Cliff Road bike path, there was a yellow line down the middle to divide the path.
Oh, to divide the path.
So the minute we start painting little guys on bikes on Orange Street and some of these other streets, we're gonna, we're gonna get flack about it, the HCC will probably even have a word or two with us about it.
I'm, I'm sure we have, like, maybe we can, you know, I, I know we've got stencils in-house to do it, but, and, and that's great.
I think we can overcome those hurdles Bobby, I hear you, I hear you. That's some flacks worth, worth taking.
So I, I have no problem with that. I, I, I am personally not in favor of the historic in-town bike path, the blue route.
No, that, that's part of the reason we're having this discussion tonight, just to look at it one more time.
Not promoting any bike path that is gonna take away parking spaces in a, in an area that is predominantly small properties with beautiful, nice little side yards and cut yards. And has always had off-street parking, because the minute you take away those eleven spaces, I guarantee you we'll have twenty people coming in asking for off-street parking. And I hate to see all these little beautiful yards downtown disappear for people to park their cars in. And some of them don't have room for parking and they, where are they supposed to park? I mean, if we're gonna take parking away from the street or off the sidewalks, because that's where they've been parking forever, then we need to supply parking for them in return. We can't just say, you're not parking here anymore, cause we want, we don't want you to, without giving them somewhere else to go. So.
Well, we have, we, uh, two thousand, yeah, first time I ran, fifty, twelve years ago, uh, there were three, streets in town that were allowed, to be allowed to put one, uh, wheel up on the sidewalk and that was it, that was the policy, that was, uh, it was on a piece of paper, that was the deal. I can't remember, it was probably Dover and a couple others. Now it is, it is morphed into parking on the sidewalk everywhere, even in places where you don't need to park on the sidewalk. And when I brought it to the chief's attention, that gee whiz, that was the policy, did you know about it? He didn't know about it, it didn't carry through from those days. So I think at some point, you know, we, and it's a hard decision and I understand people don't wanna, you know, don't wanna address it, but at some point we have to address it. Are we, are the sidewalks for pedestrians or the sidewalks for cars? You know, I mean, and then that's, and we're gonna have that conversation a little further, but I think, you know, and I agree with you on the side yards, et cetera, but I just wanna correct that it hasn't always been this way.
Well, it's been, they've been parking on Cliff Road since I was a kid and I grew up in that neighborhood and there was always cars on that sidewalk, so.
But, but they used to put, they, they used to do the one-wheel up if that. Now they park, they take over the whole thing. And they, and even places, bottom part of Center Street, across from, uh, oh, the restaurant that's there, uh, American Seasons, there's no reason to park on the sidewalk on the left, it's huge there and they still park and cover the whole sidewalk.
When we put the meters in every thirty feet, then they won't be able to get up on the sidewalks.
There we go.
Because we know there's a value, a value to a free space, so.
Bobby, just
We could put those horse things, remember they used to put in the Tyler Duck?
Oh, yeah.
But then they can't get up on the sidewalk.
Just, you know, just to, um, address your concerns about, um, people not having a space, this, you know, seven or so spaces re- recommended by Traffic Safety on High Street and Pleasant Street, um, all those properties in front of them have off-street parking currently. That was one of the reasons why that route made the most sense in addition to other reasons.
But the people that live four doors down don't.
Yeah.
And they, not everybody parks in front of their house, so.
I, 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 I understand that Bobby and I respect that, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Just a, a question on the stenciling. The existing ways to get to the Hummock Pond or Milk Street, um, from downtown without going south or north, are those stenciled, uh, you know, the old Harvey Young path?
Oh, they're signed.
Are there signs?
And there might have been old stencils that have worn off.
Yeah, that, I think there may have been, but there are signs and stickers on
I, I, I don't ride them, but are they clear enough so you, that's the accepted way to go?
There are several signs and stickers.
Like it or not, I just wanna be sure.
You see the signs, but if you, if the road's stenciled, you see the, you see the stencil in the road a lot better than you see a sign.
So I'm just sort of asking, why not stencil there as well Bobby, you don't have to take the parking places away.
Yeah, well, you cut across it up to Fair and then you dump in on the top of Main Street, that route used to be a stencil.
Whatever the accepted way out is, if it's different than the one Toby was working for, that's understandable to bias. But, but let's have one that everybody at least says that's the quasi-official way to get out, it just seems to me that makes sense, but maybe
Or just for the very, we're sorry.
I, I'm just, I'm worried about it in a, a different way, I, I'm concerned with us, there are many little, many side streets in and out of town that you can choose. I'm worried about telling people that have never been here before, that have their kids in one of those little carriers behind them, that this is the safer route when you're clearly sharing any one of these roadways with cars. There's no, there's, there's no separate lane that's being created. I just, I think that we could have some multiple ways of, you know, these are ways to go in and out and avoid going the wrong way down one-way streets and so forth, but saying that we as a Board of Selectmen say this is the safer way, I just don't think is something that we can really say.
Are you saying there's no safe ways?
Well, I think that there are certain points where you need to get off and walk your bike on the sidewalk if you truly wanna keep your kids safe.
So what you're suggesting though, I think is that getting out of downtown, there are only, what, two ways then?
Well, no, I'm
I mean, I mean, that, that will mark and call safe, I'm just, I'm not against that, I just wanna understand.
I just think that there are multiple ways, but you have to recognize on all of these roadways that you're sharing the road with cars.
Yeah, and I think, I think
And that it's not a designated separate way to go that's truly protected and safe like a bike path.
And I, and I think that's the beauty of a, a sh- a shero that's, you know, been used in a lot of other cities and it kinda denotes that it's not a separate lane with a separate line, it's, you know, I think that's something very familiar with other folks and that's something, you know, we can also learn as an island. You know, I, I think it is helpful for people just in a, a sheer like guidance, like saying this is a, a way to get out of town, you know, that's simple enough. You know, it, it's useful in that regards as well, you know, in the same way we have signs that say to Walwynett or Wisconsin, it's useful.
But I think, and I, what, one of my concerns is, is sharing Orange Street. Orange Street is usually if it's a shared road and, you know, there's certain streets in other places that they'll have cars and walk, everyone will share the road and you understand it, that means you're driving at twenty miles an hour, you're not driving at forty. And it's delineated and it's clear and it's usually a small road in a, you know, sort of historic area, it's not necessarily Orange Street. And I think Orange Street myself, I think it should have a lane on it. I think there's room, if we, you know, if we examine it, I'd love to, maybe this year we share it, but next year there should be a striped lane. The lane stays clear, you park between the sidewalk and the first stripe on the lane and that's where you park and bikes use it and then people see there's a bike lane, cause when, you know, I was in San Diego a few days ago, it's a city with bike lanes through it, but people are careful, cause there's a bike lane there. I'm not so sure they're gonna be careful, cause there's a bike guy, you know, blue bike guy painted on the road. I, I think it's, and so we have to
That's a good distinction, right?
Yeah, I think we have to, you know, we have to realize that some of these roads are gonna, you know, if we're gonna really share them that way and keep the parking on them for the neighbors, then those roads have to delineate it some way that they are a shared street and it's a twenty or thirty mile hour. In places that's appropriate, I like Hussy and Quince. You know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna keep the parking there, then we may have to take the sidewalks off on one side to allow, and allow the parking and make those roads actually look like a shared road that you're allowed to, that people can walk right down the middle of or bike right down the middle. And that's, you know, and, and that's a little further than we've gone, I think, but you know, that, that's, I think, where we're heading, if we wanna make it safe, we need to change things substantially in the next few years. You know, uh, uh, tweaking around the edges, you know, and I think a lot that we've done is amazing and it's really good, but I think that there's more we have to do, especially downtown.
And I think it's, it's also like, it, it starts us on the process, you know, all these things we have laid out before us, it starts us on the process of examining further, you know, what we'd really like to implement as far as, you know, maybe there are some changes in ways of streets or maybe we, we create, if you create a one-way, you create parking down the whole side of a street and then you know, there's your parking spaces that you need created Bobby, you know, there's, there might be some other ways, but I think this is a step in changing our culture, um, to get us there and, and one other thing I just wanted to point out, which is that I think it's really important that we remember that not everybody has a driver's license and walking is the most efficient way. We have a history on the island of cycling thirty years prior to cars. And it's important that, you know, people with disability, you know, can bike, you know, people who have their license And it's important that, you know, people with disability, you know, can bike, you know, people who have their license taken away, teenagers who don't currently have a driver's license, so they can get in and out safely, elderly folks who've had their license taken away, uh, maybe they wanna get on a trike and bike five miles an hour, and if they had a safe way, they'd do it. You know, there's, um, I, I just think it's important to keep in mind that there are folks without cars who we should be conscious of. It's not just a safety issue, it's a social justice issue.
All right, well, I think we pretty much covered this. We have some other things on our agenda. Do we have any other questions, or? Ms. Williams.
Linda Williams, Chairman of the HDC and bike rider for my entire life. I was against this when it came to the BMAC. I'm the Planning Commission, and you know that. I'm the Planning Commission representative to the bike group that was set up by the Planning Commission. I fought this. I was very disheartened by the fact that it, it's being promoted again, this in-town thing, with wheelie-deeleys all over the roads and signs and these green things. I've got the packet. These green signs with arrows going everywhere. I think we're throwing out the historic nature of Nantucket before I bike. What's bringing people here and what's special about Nantucket is the historic, especially the historic downtown. I'm not talking about bike paths on Tom Never's Road and Pulpit, and we've done a magnificent job with our bike paths. But planting stencils all over really old roads as opposed to the little shiny things that are on the posts with arrows going for Cisco, arrows going for Maticket, which we've always followed. I thought that worked very well. But throwing these green signs with arrows all over the old historic districts and wheelie-deeleys all over the roads, blue or white, I don't care what color they are, it's more desecration of the historic district. This is insane. Everything you guys do or plan on doing with bike pa- with bike routes and all this other stuff has to consider the impact unintended or intended on the historic nature of the downtown. And the old historic district goes all the way up to Caton Circle. It includes Woodbury, for better or for worse. It goes all the way out past Cumberland Farms. It goes all the way up to, I believe, North Liberty Street where it comes out, and it goes all the way down to the waterfront and down, uh, Eastern Street. And all this foo-foo stuff that's being proposed in the old historic district with all these signs and painted stuff is, is insane. And it's a terrible impact on the old historic district. I think you need to think about this. I agree with Dawn when she said there are multiple ways in and out of town. Matt and I and Bobby grew up on the cliff for the most part, and we rode our bikes anywhere and took any route we wanted to take. I mean, this is nuts.
And, and our, and our kids can't do that anymore.
Mine take the bike pass. Where I live, I get bike pass all the way to town.
But, 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 you know, and my point is that you can't, you can't safely send your kids anymore.
No. And my kids have been blown off their bikes on the old, on South Shore Road.
Yeah.
The problem is, you have to consider the unintended consequences of a negative impact on the visual and historic character of the old historic district.
And, and I really wish they did, and, you know.
And they haven't asked the HDC for any opinions. They put up bike racks that are horrendous, not historic at all, in front of the oldest building downtown that didn't, that was reconstructed first after the eighteen forty-six fire. They got this ridiculous stuff planted in front of the Athenaeum. In eighteen forty-six, the first building reconstructed was the Athenaeum. And we got these things and these round, black things for bike racks all over town that have desecrated the historic nature of downtown. We have to think about painting curb cuts blue, like on that little street that goes down to the Stop and Shop. You gotta think about all this stuff. It's not necessary to desecrate what makes Nantucket special. And I wish they would've worked with the HDC. No one's asked our opinion about anything. They just throw it in there. That's wrong. And then, as far as improving sidewalks, which I guess Becky will get to or have gotten to, we don't oppose fixing the sidewalks, that's for darn sure, because they're, they're going up and downhill and in and out of everything. What we oppose is using inappropriate brick. We've seen the damage that did to Upper Main Street on the right. They never replaced the brick as they said they were going to do, and that brick has fallen apart.
You're talking about in front of, uh, the drugstores?
Yeah.
That's the safest sidewalk in town.
It is, because it was reset. However, it was reset.
It was bricks that were actually flat and square.
However, they've acknowledged that those bricks are falling apart, Bobby.
I'm gonna stop you here, because this is not a public debate.
I know it's not.
This is a workshop, and I, I let you up despite, that I normally don't let people talk during a workshop. Now you're gone, off into one of your little tangents.
Well, I just wanna make sure, anything done is good.
So, I'm gonna please ask you to sit down. I got you. We got it.
Anything done, ask the HDC to, uh, for an opinion, instead of ignoring.
We don't need to ask you for every permission to do everything in town. Unbeknownst to what you might think, we can get by without you and the HDC. We can make certain decisions on our own. Thank you. All right. Um, anything else on the bike path?
I guess just in response, Bobby, I would love it if we could turn back in time to nineteen seventeen, before, before we had cars.
We would've cut the roads forty foot wide and moved the houses, and we would've been great.
And I, and I, I actually do agree with Linda, which is why I think a bike lane is better than a little doohickey, but that's, you know.
All right. Um, I'm gonna move this on to the next item on our workshop.
Bobby, can, can we, can we vote on this?
Vote on what? We have them really, we usually don't take action in a, in a, we can, what do we, first of all, what do you wanna vote on? Because I still don't know what we're voting on. Are we voting on stenciling the road?
I would, I think, I think in my mind, just the consensus of the board would be, you know, align on Orange Street, mark the current path that exists down Pleasant or Jefferson, whatever, and then I'd like to vote on the historic bike route, um, and the elimination of those seven parking spaces as recommended by Traffic Safety.
Sorry, can you repeat what you wanna vote on?
I'm gonna vote on them one at a time.
Do, I, I thought, just started, I, I didn't think we were gonna be voting in a workshop.
No, we're gonna put three items. I wanna make sure they're separate. We'll put it on an agenda.
Put it on an agenda, okay, right. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't vote in work, in workshops.
Oh, thank you, Bobby.
So, it's three items. It's
On Orange Street? Um, stenciling the current route that's laid out, and, um, I don't know, the in-town bike path route. There's a couple of them. There, you know, there's little signs, but they're not clearly marked.
I think they're pla- I, I think, according to our packet, that's planned, they're planning to have that done, correct, Mike?
Yeah.
The, the stenciling of the existing routes. That's planned for this summer.
Correct. And, and the, the, the ones that have been approved, the proposed routes that have been approved and are included in the plan as well.
And, and the Orange Street, the shero on Orange Street is already planned for this summer. Is that correct?
Uh, correct. That was one of the, uh, identified proposed routes that we would stencil.
Will you bring us what that looks like when we have this, when we have the meeting?
What the stencil looks like, or what the
Or what it, what it's gonna look like on the street when we have the meeting, so we can make sure we don't desecrate the
I'll have to work with DPW on that. I'm really dependent on
Yeah, but bring that in, 'cause we wanna make sure we don't desecrate the, the historic roadways.
Uh, I don't, we can bring it in for show and tell?
Yes, please.
Okay.
All right, and then the third item is to vote on the historic in-town bike route, and I just wanna be very clear that if this does get a positive vote, it goes into the capital Q. It just doesn't materialize to happen this year. It goes into the capital program, and it gets, uh, vetted by capital and put into our long-term capital plan.
And I, I think, Bobby, when we get to that, that can be your motion. I, I would like to have it done this year. And, and we can talk about that at future time, but that's, I think it's
Well, we haven't even approved it yet, so.
Yeah, I, I just think it's important that we try to do something for this
We'll put it on the agendas for some time in the next, we're, next week's pretty tied up, so we'll, Libby and I'll look at it and figure it out.
Thank you, Bobby.
And, in regards to all of this, the only other thing I think, and this isn't for tonight, the only other thing we need to talk about, I think, is the bike paths themselves are unsafe. The way we, right now, the way, how do I say this? Uh, cars don't respect that it's a traveled way, and they drive right into it without looking, and bikers don't respect the, the travel way, and they go blasting across roads that they have no, they, 'cause they, 'cause we have so many signs, it's a nuisance. So, they don't, they ignore the ones they really shouldn't ignore, and it, and at some point, we need to tackle this, because my, and, and I'll tell, my wife was almost killed this past summer, and she's going fifteen miles an hour on a bike path, and a car went right into her, and she yelled at the guy, and, you know, and he wasn't even looking. So, you know, it, i- if you bike every day, once or twice a summer, you're almost killed, and you're on the bike path. And that's only getting worse. Everyone that bikes every day, it's getting worse and worse.
We must live in a combat zone, 'cause you make it sound like it, you can't drive out of your house and run a hundred feet down the bike, bike path while getting run over by a car. I, you know, I, I gotta tell you, I, I ride a bike every day, Matt, in the summer, and I gotta tell you, I live on one of the busiest bike paths on the road, on the island. I live on on Milestone Bike Path, and I guarantee you, if I sit there for three hours at that stop sign at the end of my road, not one biker stops. So, I would bet, I would, I would bet you mu- big money that the majority of these people that are hit by cars is because they weren't abiding the laws. They ride up one-way streets the wrong way, they cut in and out of cars, they never stop at the stop signs. I mean, I
But I, if there's a way to improve it, Bobby, we need
Yeah, people have accidents with bikes, but people have accidents with cars, people have accidents walking across the street. How many people fall on the damn cobblestones and hurt themselves because the sidewalks aren't? I mean, we're beating this dead, this horse to death here.
I, I don't, and I disagree with you on that. I don't think we are, and I think that, uh, if you talk to the hospital and talk to the ER at the end of August, and, and talk, which I did when Sheila went in, and the stories they started telling me about people, you know, hit by box, you know, on, and one of it was, you know, on Prospect Street, you know, flown off, medevac'd off, hit by the, uh, the mirror of a box truck. Guy kept driving, didn't know, even know where hit her. The person was, uh, you know, was, uh, medevac'd off with serious head injuries. Uh, they had a whole list, and that was just one story of three or four they were telling me. It, it, I think it is a lot worse than we remember. You might be fortunate, you know, at the hours you go or where you go, but it's, it is, it's pretty dangerous.
And I think the solution is just to ban bikes from some of these roads, then.
I think this, no, I think there
Because if you can't share them with the cars, then the bikes should stay off, and these should be for vehicles only.
I agree with you. Prospect is one of them that we might wanna do that on, but, but that, we need to continue to have this discussion to, to solve some of these, and I think, and we should attempt to improve some of these things, but that's, you know, I'm one vote. I'm one person.
All right, so we'll put that on the agenda, those three items, in, for the near future. Next is, uh, um, an update from the Roads and Right-of-Ways Committee. Alan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Selectmen, for taking the time to, uh, deal with some of these issues. I know, uh, I, I'm not gonna talk about bicycles, even though I'm quite familiar with them myself, uh, and one of the things I've observed both as a pedestrian, my favorite way to get around is on foot, and, um, a lot of the work of the Roads and Right-of-Way Committee has been on pedestrian access. Uh, we're also, um, interested, of course, in public access all over the island. Uh, the purpose of the committee or our mission is to deal with these issues, to deal with issues of the status of public access over, uh, public and private roads. We do this in a number of ways. Um, over the years, we've taken on several projects that deal with, uh, various aspects of obtaining public access and public rights of way throughout the island. We're concerned mainly with, um, access to the water. We're concerned with, um, well, most recently with sidewalks, and I'll talk about that in just a, a couple of minutes. The, uh, it, let me get to public access. Erica, if you could just flesh that up there. Uh, some of the projects that we've done over the years. The Founder's Burial Ground is an interesting, uh, uh, illustration of some of the work that is, is, has been done by the Roads and Right-of-Way Committee. The Founder's Burial Ground, of course, is where the original settlers are buried, or many of the original settlers are buried. A number of years ago, the property surrounding it was sold and divided into house lots. It ended up, there was no public access to the Founder's Burial Ground. There was an easement that went from Cliff Road across the property, but there was a very deep valley and so on. It was basically an unusable access. The Roads and Right-of-Way Committee worked, um, for several years, actually, uh, with the Planning Director to secure access to the Founder's Burial Ground by negotiating an easement with the Land Bank and the Anglers Club to provide access to the Founder's Burial Ground. That's the type, the type of projects that the Roads and Right-of-Way Committee has looked at over the years. Where are, um, areas, whether it's to the beach, whether it's to the, um, ponds, whether it's to different public lands across the island or private properties such as Land Bank and Conservation Foundation, other conservation properties that are open to the public. Uh, we look for access to these different areas. Steps Beach is another, uh, project. For many years, everyone thought that the town owned the way Indian Avenue from, uh, Lincoln Circle down to the beach at Steps. And as it turned out, um, it was not a public way, even though this, the town had maintained, built and maintained those stairs for over twenty years. The Right-of-Way Committee got involved, again, working with the Planning Office to, uh, negotiate a, an easement down Indian Avenue and a subsequent license agreement with the property owners on both sides of the path going down. It's also tied, yeah.
Former Selectman Chadwick, I think he had a lot of interest in that project and helped to move it along.
No, absolutely. In fact, uh, you may remember that, um, the Roads and Right-of-Way Committee had a Selectman member designated as, as, uh, you know, that, that's how we got up to nine members on the, on our committee. Brian, indeed, was very involved, uh, with that. In fact, many of the directives come, have come from the Board of Selectmen. For example, the encroachment policy I mentioned in just a moment, that was a request from the town manager to the Roads and Right-of-Way Committee to, um, uh, help assemble and that the encroachment policy that's been adopted. Um, we've also worked with the, uh, Planning Office on the One Big Beach easements at Surfside. We were involved. In fact, there was a memo back in two thousand and six from the committee supporting the One Big Beach easements for the Surfside Six. You may remember that, uh, experience. From that, we've learned a tremendous amount, uh, and the One Big Beach Program, and Matt was directly involved in that back a number of years ago, and that, that program was, um, introduced. Uh, that program has really expanded to be, uh, I would say, a, a major success in terms of providing public access to the beaches around the island. We see that certainly at Eo Point, where we picked up, um, I believe nearly half a mile of beach, um, at Eo Point, where, uh, I'm sorry, at Dionis, where we picked up other properties around the island, Maticasham, for example, in addition to the Surfside, uh, takings and so on. We also worked with the DPW Director as far as developing a potential takings list. We used to call it a priority takings list until we realized that as a committee, the Roads and Right-of-Way Committee has no power, we don't, you know, take anything, we our only power is to make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen County Commissioners. And it is through the quality of the work that we bring to you for our recommendations, um, that, that we act. We have no power ourselves to do any of this stuff. We do work with the DPW Director, though, in terms of reviewing the potential, uh, pu- uh, private roads that might, that should be taken. And we have a, uh, criteria, they're in your packet. Um, there are seven different criteria that we use when we're looking at these private roads, uh, before, um, the recommendations, uh, are developed with the DPW Director. Now, it really is, of course, the DPW that is responsible for the takings, um, and, but we do work with them, as far as making recommendations based on the matrix that we've developed for the road takings. Um, one of the projects that I'm, I'm most, um, proud of, I guess, of as far as what are the achievements of the Roads and Right-of-Way Committee, is the, uh, project that we've taken on as far as placing the granite public way monuments around the island. Uh, this project began, um, five or six, maybe seven years ago. The years seem to go by pretty quickly. And, uh, over that time, we have currently in place, uh, thirty-six upright and flush granite public way monuments that we've installed. Now, this is in addition to a number of concrete monuments that were placed during the fifties and then later during the seventies. And you've probably seen some of those around. By the way, all of these By the way, all of these monuments are listed on our website, the Rhodes and Right-Away Committee website, or it's on the Towns website, but under the Rhodes and Right-Away section. And, um, what we've done with each of the public way monuments that we have located, you'll find a photograph, you'll find the longitude and latitude, you'll find a, a specific reference to it. And all of this material is available, um, to the public, uh, available on our, our website. And, uh, we're continuing that program. Um, we have on order five additional granite public way monuments that we'll be placing. Uh, one, two, three additional ones along Baxter Road to mark the lateral ways to the footpath. Uh, we're still waiting for, I believe, one, possibly two more of those ways, the taking process to be complete. When those are complete, those will be marked as well. We have also marked the beginning of the Sconsett Footpath and the end, uh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say we have, but we have been involved with the creation of new signage at both the beginning and the end of the Sconsett Footpath. At the beginning of the footpath, there's a poem that, uh, reflects the path, um, at the, uh, and then we have marked the, the lateral ways there. When the ways along Hobart Avenue are taken, those ways will also be marked with the granite, um, public way monuments. One, two of those ways are already complete, uh, Willard Street and, um, one of the other ones have already been taken. Uh, those, again, those public way monuments are on order. So those are some of the public access projects that are, we're continuing to work on and have been working on. Uh, Erica, the next slide. Uh, this is Founder's Burial Ground. The Rhodes and Right-Away Committee was looking for some way to, uh, commemorate, I guess, the achievement, because, uh, the committee felt this was an important achievement, getting access to the Founder's Burial Ground. Again, this is, uh, an important historical site, as, as we saw it. And so, um, once we rededicated the cemetery, provided the access through the easement that we helped negotiate, uh, we decided to create a women's monument at the Founder's Burial Ground, and that's, uh, that's what you see here. Again, it's, um, if you haven't been up to see it, it's really quite, uh, quite a lovely monument. We duplicated exactly the size, the shape of the existing men's monument that was placed in eighteen eighty-one. And, uh, we did it in two thousand and nine as a commemoration of the, um, three hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the settlement of Nantucket by European settlers. Erica? Eric, okay, yeah, this is Step Speech. This is an example of the, um, public way monuments that we use. Again, these are granite monuments. We wanted something, um, initially, we were going to use concrete, that was the plan. We were going to duplicate the ones that were planted, or that were installed in the fifties and seventies. And, um, the problem with the concrete ones is that they, um, just don't hold up. Uh, they eventually rust out. Many of the older ones that we found, we have photographs of in our, on our website. You'll see that the rebar is sticking out and so on, so that's why we, uh, went with the granite ones. Let's see, Erica, next one. This is, uh, one of the lateral ways at the end of the Sconsett, uh, I'm sorry, from Baxter Road over to the footpath. We use a mixture of the upright public way monuments and, um, where appropriate, the flush ones that are in the ground. And this is, this is an example of one of the flush ones. Uh, then, this is, um, a public way. This is at the end of Maya Comet, um, Road is your, or, yeah, Maya Comet Road is your going down to the beach there. And again, um, you can't really see it, but on the left-hand side is the way down to the beach. Uh, and the next one is, um, this is a project where we were asked, um, to assist with the Great Harbor Yacht Club. They had a Chapter Ninety-One issue where they had to provide public access. So there are six of the, uh, there's, there are six flush concrete in the ground and two of these, uh, upright wooden ones that indicate the public access. And where you can actually walk from Fifty-Six Union Street or from, you know, we're right next to the restaurant there, all the way around through the property down to the beach on, uh, Washington Street. And our committee was directly involved with, uh, the placement of these public access walkways. So some of the other, uh, projects, I mentioned the encroachment policy. Again, we were, um, approached by the town manager a couple of years ago, uh, to work with the town to help create an encroachment policy. We had Joe Marklinger, who's a surveyor, who's also on our, our, uh, committee, uh, worked and developed an encroachment policy, presented it to the, uh, DPW, uh, Director. And over time, that, that encroachment policy, um, is now in place. It's been endorsed by the Board of Selectmen. The difference with this policy, um, the old policy didn't have any teeth to it. There was no real enforcement mechanism. And, uh, we, uh, worked with the DPW Director to develop an encroachment policy that does have an enforcement mechanism to it.
And Alan, just would, just, could you just remind us what the enforcement mechanism is? I, I recall we were talking about permits wouldn't be issued or something, or what? What, what is the mechanism? And, and to Libby, is it in place now?
I don't recall what it was.
Uh, well, in terms of it being in place, yes, the, the board did vote, I believe it was some time ago, six, eight months ago. Uh, in terms of the enforcement mechanism, it depends. It depends on the, we, we identified three different types of encroachments, basically in terms of how serious they were. Uh, the main ones are sightlines, for example, cars pulling up to an intersection, you can't see what's coming and so on. Uh, we felt that this was a danger, not just for the car traffic, but also for the bicycles and pedestrians and so on. Uh, the enforcement issue there is, uh, notice from the, uh, I believe it's the DPW, um, sends notice, directing the, uh, or pointing out what the encroachment is and giving a time limit. And, oh, Cara, do you want to, do you want to elaborate on this first?
When a, uh, safety situation is identified, if it's an immediate safety hazard, we can go out and take care of it immediately. If it is something that can be, uh, duh, given a period of time, we notify the property owner and give them, uh, a period of time to correct that situation. If they don't, we will go in and correct it ourselves. We do have the ability to charge them, but we haven't been utilizing that at this point. We're still trying to get our handle on creating a, a viable program out of it.
And, oh, one of the other things related to this is that, uh, Cara is planning to do, uh, and it, there's an education component to this as well, to go into a neighborhood where there are encroachments to either have a flyer go door-to-door, you know, just to let people know, uh, that what an encroachment is, what our encroachment policy is, and then to follow that up, uh, with contact for the specific encroachments and so on.
So, so it sounds like at this point, the enforcement policy is the town will step in and take independent action if the homeowner doesn't do anything?
Yeah, essentially.
And in effect, we'll do it for you and.
Yeah.
We'll build you if we get around to it, but if we don't, we don't, and then the encroachment is removed.
Correct.
But it sounds like we're focusing on cases of safety. Yes. If it's not a safety issue, it's probably not being addressed yet, is my.
Well, there, there are other encroachment issues. For example, um, you'll find pipes, usually drainage pipes or something that come out into the roadway. There are, sometimes people will build walls in the roadway, uh, things like rocks, for example. People like to put rocks in front of their houses, even though it's in the roadway.
Sometimes to keep people from parking there.
To keep people from parking.
Just, just to take an example.
Or they plant trees to keep them from parking.
Or, you know, look, the board dealt with this with Cathcart Road.
Exactly.
Or block public ways.
Or block public ways. So, um, a- again, somehow in the back of my mind, I thought there was another step in this that might involve something more severe. But if we're getting done what we need to get done with this policy, that's fine. We have to, it might be interesting at some point to identify the actions we've had to take by address versus those that we all know exist where we probably haven't asserted our rights yet, right? I think there's some of those out there.
There, there, there are some, but, um, generally what's happened is that once people are notified, people seem to be taking care of, of, of most of these. For example, there were some rocks on Cliff Road, um, this was maybe a year or so ago.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, those were brought to Rhodes and Right-Away Attention, to the DPW Attention, and a week later, those rocks were removed. So, um, you know, there, i- i- it seems to be working. And like anything else, it's educating people about, uh, the importance of encroachments. And the fact that people, a lot of people don't realize that the roadway is different than the road, that the town owns the way, not just the, the road. And, you know, so there is an education component to that as well.
Okay, thanks, just wanted to follow up.
Alan, I'm, just in, in regards to kind of the ways, has your committee looked in, you know, into any of the encroachments from revetment projects along, um, Monomoy and Shimo? Where the public can't walk by at the, between the low and high watermark?
Um, I'm just trying, uh, just, no, I, I, I don't, I don't recall any specific ones, um, that we've dealt with. Is there a particular one you have in mind?
There isn't a number of them, I'm just curious if that's something you've looked at, because I know in the past, people did use to walk along the beach. And now if it's high tide, you can't, you kind of have to go into the water.
Well, I'm.
There's also like rocks along why. No, like the high tide is, you know, come up to a point where, you know, you can't pass in the high and low watermark.
There, there are pla, usually those, those, uh, areas, there are groynes, there are, uh, you know, breakwaters, there are all sorts of construction project. I walk a significant portion of the beach every summer. And I'm pretty much familiar with all of the different types of projects and encroachments and so on that happen. Particularly along the North Shore, I walked the stretch from basically Children's Beach out to Torrio Point, um, a couple of times a summer. And it's pretty amazing what happens out there. Um, there's not a lot you can do with the rock revetment, for example, uh, at the end of, well, you know, out on the North Shore there, that's there. Those groynes that are there, the other, uh, structures that are there, you know, those apparent, the, the, they must have at some point been licensed or approved, so.
Well, just, I, you know, we're talking about encroachments and it's just something I, you know, I, I know there's a couple of spots out in, uh, you know, Shimo, if you walk past kind of the second, you know, pier out there, the private pier, and you keep walking down further, you, you just can't go anymore, it's, you know, revetments in the way, so. Just, you know, th- these things drift away in other ways, not just vegetation.
Well, sometimes you do have to climb over them. You do have to climb over, as I say, I've, I've circumnavigated the island myself in, in sections, the whole, the whole thing. And there are definitely some places where it is a challenge, let's put it that way, to get over different instructions. But most of those are, are licensed, um.
North Shore, some on the North Shore have been thirty, forty, fifty years.
Yeah, exactly.
A couple that you have to hop over.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe even longer, yeah, they've been there.
Yeah, no, it's just something I think we should be aware of, you know, just trying to make it easier for people to pass, you know, as, as the CONCOM's approving things.
Well, as, as we.
We want to be all working together on the same page.
I don't know, I'm not sure that they're, are they still approving things that stick across? I don't think they are.
No.
No, I think the, a lot of what you're talking about has been there for fifty years.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but, but there are, there has been, um, you know, projects over the last five years where they've renewed.
They're allowed to repair what's existing.
Right, repair.
They can't put anything new.
Right, but so they're, in, in those repairs, though, where, you know, the permit is pulled again and reassessed. And I think that's just something we should, you know, be on the same page as, as the Rhodes and Right-Away and Board of Selectmen, the CONCOMs, making sure we maintain, you know, steps over those, uh, revetments, you know, to maintain the access.
Uh, well, now that, you raise another interesting point there. Uh, Washington Street, for example, as you go along the beach at Washington Street, one of the, uh, projects that the board, actually, this was back in two thousand and seven, eight, nine, developed was a Harbor Walk project. That project, um, we mentioned that in our roads, the, there's a Right-Away Improvement Plan that we did back in two thousand and eight, presented to the board and so on, and that includes reference to a Harbor Walk. Ultimately, the Harbor Walk goes from, uh, Brant Point, um, all the way down to the, uh, Land Bank property at, um, near Otis, near the, the creeks down there. And that's one of these long-range projects, because there are all sorts of pieces, there are a couple of pieces that are missing and so on. But, uh, as you go along Washington Street, along the beach, there are a couple of places where in fact, there should be some stairs over the, um, you know, to get over the dock or to the, the, you know, whatever's in the way there. And, um, that's, that comes under the Chapter Ninety-One License things, which, um, one of the other project, one of the other things that Rhodes and Right-Away has done in the past is dealt with the, um, Chapter Ninety-One License, uh, issues. For example, the, the footpath that goes around the Great Harbor Yacht Club. As I said, we were directly involved with the placement of those there, so. Other projects that we've been involved with, uh, bike route connections that Mike was talking about earlier. Uh, we have recommended, you may remember, we came to the board back in, uh, I think it was two thousand and nine, with a proposal to turn Saratoga's, uh, make it one way the other direction. And we were working, uh, now the plan is to do Wind Street and up over Mill Hill. Uh, there've been a number of different connections that have been proposed over the years. And now that those are, um, you know, like many projects, it takes a while for these things to materialize, for the funding, for the planning, for it to get agreement, um, you know, that sort of thing. So we've, we've, uh, we're very much interested in connecting the, uh, the three major bike paths, Surfside, Madiket, and, um, the New Hummock Pond, uh, bike path coming in from the west side. We're very much in favor of the, uh, in-town bike route going over the railroad bed and so on. Uh, that's been a project that, uh, our committee's worked on since two thousand and five. So there, there are other, uh, bike route connections like that. Cliff Road is another one, but that is, as you were discussing earlier, is, uh, that, that's a tough one. Uh, when I'm riding a bike that way, I go down Dairy Moore over to Liberty and so on, that, you know. I think anyone who rides a bike on a regular basis knows where the back roads are to avoid the traffic. And, you know, that's the, it's hard to, well, anyway, that's a whole, the, the whole different, um, whole different subject. Island Trail Systems, one of the things that, uh, the, uh, we have done is we've mapped out island, uh, the trail systems around the island. Most of the trails are on private property, either mostly conservation property. The Land Bank, the Conservation Foundation in Mass Audubon, all publish maps of their, the, the trail systems uh, that are on their property. We've combined those, there is a map, again, on our website. Uh, this was part of the Right-Away Improvement Plan that we did, that shows where these trail systems are. Uh, one of the trail projects that we're working on currently is the railroad, uh, that, as you know, the, the railroad went from Straight Wharf to First, to Surfside, then along the beach to Sconsett. That didn't work out so well because of the changing, uh, Summer Beach and Winter Beach and all that sort of thing. So they rerouted it out across, um, the middle of the island, over to, uh, Tom Nevers, and then down to, uh, the beach at Sconsett. Our committee, uh, has, uh, we have a map of the railroad route. We have purchased from the, um, state, um, uh, state office, the name, so we can use that, uh, Nantucket Central Railroad. And we're in the process of developing a, a path. This is in cooperation with the property owners, um, along the way. Um, so that's, that's a work in progress. And we've also, uh, worked with the, again, with the planning director on the open space. And we've also, uh, worked with the, again, with the Planning Director on the Open Space Plan Update. That will include maps of some of these trail systems that we've been working on. And we use part of a CPA grant that we have to partially fund the Open Space Plan Update. So those are some of the projects that we've been working on. And, um, Erica, is there another? Oh, downtown sidewalk. Uh, this is, this is the last piece here. The Downtown Sidewalk Survey is, uh, our most recent project. This came about, um, because back in two thousand eleven, when there was a lot of sewer work that was going on in town, sidewalks would be disturbed for sewers and so on, the Rhodes and Right Away Committee was asked to work with the, there was a sidewalk group that sort of had existed earlier. So we worked again, uh, to, uh, as that sewer work was underway, to make recommendations regarding the sidewalks and the curbs and, and, and that sort of thing. When we were doing that, uh, members of the committee said, you know, boy, the, the sidewalks in the downtown area need some attention. And so we undertook a sidewalk survey, and again, you have in your packet a more detailed, um, outline of what we have done there. Basically, we took, uh, we took a map of the downtown, we looked at every sidewalk, uh, every street that had sidewalks on it. We went up and down the, uh, both sides of the street, and we marked the condition of the sidewalks by, uh, street number up and down, um, the street. We had a total of, I think there were six hundred and some, um, street addresses and so on. We compiled all that data. We had a, a five-point scale that we were using in terms of, um, a number one sidewalk, say, would have been the north side of Main Street, the one that, uh, was referred to a while ago, uh, which we consider a number one sidewalk. That's the, uh, upper portion on the north side of Main Street. Nice and level, smooth, it has all the conditions. And there, uh, we were surprised to find that there are actually a number of, of sidewalks that are in pretty good shape. But we also found that there were a number of sidewalks in the downtown area that definitely needs some attention. They're wavy, uh, tree roots, all these sort of things. There hasn't been a lot of maintenance that has been, uh, put into these sidewalks for a number of years. This has now been, um, uh, we're, we're working on this now. The DPW has in the, uh, Capital Program Budget, um, of course, that needs to be approved by the Finance Committee and so on. But there is an allotment now of money, and I think Mike mentioned this in his report as well, uh, to do some work on the downtown sidewalks. Our goal, um, was, again, the public access part of it, particularly with the new downtown cultural district that is being planned. All the references, of course, are to a walkable downtown cultural district, and I'm sure you know where, you know, the places and the route and the boundaries and all that sort of thing. So anyway, what we've done is provided this data to the DPW, um, and to, um, develop a plan for working on some of the sidewalk issues that are extent in town. For example, uh, we took some of, you know, some of the areas can be done by the DPW, and we've worked with Kara, uh, to identify which areas those are. There are other, uh, areas of sidewalk that are much bigger, more comprehensive. These will need, uh, we, we figure to be, uh, contracted out, and that's where the, that's where the Capital Program monies come in. So, uh, what I've done, in your packet, you'll find a more detailed description of the downtown sidewalk project. And, um, uh, so I guess that's pretty much it. That's what we are, that's what we've been doing. The two things that we really emphasize are public access and trying to get, make it comfortable for people to get around, whether it's in cars, whether it's on, you know, using the public ways around the island, that's been our focus. So, uh, I'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Board members?
Just one, one quick one, I guess, is, is, and I, I did read the sidewalk plan and all that. If we do spend, you know, substantial money, ten, twelve million dollars to fix them, how do we ensure that once they're fixed, they remain fixed, the sidewalks? You guys have any thoughts on that?
Yes, uh, well, yeah.
You mean by cars, for example?
I'm not gonna, I'm not blaming cars, I don't want Bobby yelling at me.
Well, just one, I'd comment.
One, one of the things we did in our sidewalk survey, and we do address the issue of parking on the sidewalks, um, we, we basically don't consider those, those sidewalks to be, uh, accessible, certainly they're not handicapped accessible, um, they're very difficult to walk, um, on as well, and very often you find people walking the streets. One of the things we wanna emphasize, there are a couple of gaps. Uh, you talked earlier about Prospect Street where people come off the end of the, uh, multi-use path there, and then they're basically dumped into the street. Now, there is enough room for a sidewalk that, to, uh, take from the end of the multi-use path all the way down to Milk Street. Mike Burns and I, uh, walked that with Leo Azarian, who was the surveyor who laid that out. So we know that there is room for a, this, we're talking strictly a sidewalk there. Again, that's, that intersection has been near the top of our list of recommendations, something needs to be done for that since two thousand eight. The other one, of course, is Quaker Road, when people come off the end at Caton Circle there, and the kids, you know, parents with the kids in strollers, parents with the kids and on bikes and back, and that sort of thing. So one of, one of the recommendations we've made there is the Wind Street Path, which was indicated in Mike's, um, presentation earlier.
Alan, I'm not sure it's a question, but I, my, my own sense, and I don't know how the other board members feels, is that, um, exploring additional and new public access ways to the water.
Mm-hmm.
Whether they're publicly owned or privately owned, it might involve, uh, some discussions or might even involve some takings at some point, um, is a, is a, I think, an important activity. So, uh, you know, I'm not quite sure how to get at that, whether we ask for, you know, a recommended list, or here are five ideas, or ten, you know what I mean, to keep that moving forward. I understand Steps Beach, Beach and Holbert Avenue, I, I'm alert to how we revisited Holbert Avenue after the word was, oh, we lost them, well, we, if we lost them, we got them back. And I think there might be lots of other places where public access could be achieved, so, um, anyway, that's, that's my thought in terms of asking you to take another look at that. On the North Shore, where, wherever it may be.
Exactly, yeah. I, I would say that, um, you, yeah, let, let me address that very specifically. When we were looking, uh, at places for public access, this was one of the early projects when we were doing, looking for the, um, um, the ways to the water. That's where we came up with the idea that, you know, these ways should be marked. We found the, you know, the concrete posts and so on. So that was some of the early work that we did. You remember in the Right Away Improvement Plan back in two thousand eight, that was the main focus, finding the ways to the water. And then working through the Surfside Six takings, the one big beach takings there, and then later the ones at, uh, along the North Shore at Dionis and further, a little further down the way there, same at Maticasham and so on. We have literally gone around the island, looking where the ways are, whether the public or private ways. Now, most of the, the feedback we get is along the North Shore from, uh, from, um, Monomoy down toward the Field Station, the UMass Field Station. Once you, uh, you get, you go down Cathcart Road, that's pretty much the only access in the harbor. Now Cathcart Road, as you very well know, is a very narrow, one-way, blah, blah, blah. And at the end of it, the Land Bank owns the property. The Land Bank just expanded the parking lot down there, but still, you can only get maybe eight or ten cars at most in that area. We've looked at the other ways. There's a private, uh, way that goes down off of Shimo Road, and then there are a couple of other private ways, there's one down Fulling Mill Road, both of which, uh, in the many, well, I would say years ago, people used, people assumed that those were public, and of course, they aren't public, they're all private ways down there. What Rhodes and Right Away has done, we've identified where the ways are, whether they're public or private ways. The first thing we wanted to do was to mark the public ways, and that's where the, um, and, and that's what we've been doing. Most of those ways to the beach are footpaths, you know, pedestrian access that goes down. I don't believe that there are other ways, other than, you know, unless you wanna take the private property at Fulling Mill or, or, uh, Shimo Pond, um, I think those would be very expensive takings, and you would, you have to deal with the parking as well, you have to deal with the access. You know the problem at Cathcart Road, and I think that some of those other ones you would be inviting a similar, a similar problem to. I would say, though, that if there's any access, particularly access to the water, whether it's to the beachfront or to the ponds, uh, that's something we'd be very much interested in supporting, um, if the Board of Selectmen is willing to take on.
So, so do you have a list of those other, other ways that are private that, uh, we can at least review? You mentioned two of them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that'd be good.
Yeah, and, uh, there, there are other ones. By the way, as far as access along the South Shore, uh, I'm sure you're aware that the Conservation Foundation, the Land Bank and so on, own miles of beaches, all of which have public access and parking areas and so on along the South Shore. Land Bank is working on, um, the Land Bank has substantial holdings along the west end of the island from Smooth Hummocks all the way out toward Maticket. There are some pretty substantial, uh, holdings out there, beach holdings. We're working on acquiring some other beach holdings out there, and of course, the Conservation Foundation owns substantial beachfront out that way. So I don't think that there's access issues along the South Shore that we're aware of. The main areas are along that one stretch from Monomoy to, uh, the Field Station, um, and beyond. By the way, once you get out to Quays, there is a public, uh, public access at Quays. The Land Bank has property there, and then around the harbor is a little, again, there's not a lot of access because there just aren't the ways there.
Alan, who do you take your directives from? Do you guys just sit as a committee and decide this is where we're gonna move forward on, or?
Well, um, I wouldn't put it quite that way. Over, over the years, one of the things in preparing for this, this little update tonight, uh, I went back over our annual reports for the last, um, since two thousand six, and I was frankly amazed at some of the projects that we've done over the years. Most of these projects come from the committee itself. We're always looking for public access issues. Where, um, where can we get the public, what are, what are some of the issues as far as public access? As I say, the sidewalks, which is something our committee considers to be a public access issue, we said, look, we can do better than this. Nantucket, it's historic, uh, all the sort of thing, we have thousands and thousands of tourists who like to walk around downtown, we can do better with the sidewalks. So that sort of came out of our, again, out of the committee itself. So I would say most of the projects that, um, I've covered here, plus many of the other ones that we've done, have been self-generated, but they all come from our, uh, our mission statement, our purpose of providing public access, making recommendations to the Board of Selectment, County Commissioners, in terms of, uh, issues with public access.
I have one item that I would like your committee to, um, explore in the next few months, and.
Absolutely.
It is the Chapter ninety-one licenses for us, right now, in, in particular, the, the downtown waterfront, um, whether, I, I think there's several down there between Steamboat Wharf and, and, uh, the Town Pier. You know, there's, there's a lot of changes going on down there. There's a new, bigger boat coming, and it's gonna require a new offloading system, and I know that there's a lot of things in that Chapter ninety-one license when it pertains to public access and public restrooms and all different types of things, and it's something that we don't have time to look into. I would hoping your committee would dig into it a little bit and see if some of the things that are happening or have had happened in the last few years could possibly trigger a, a change to that ninety-one license, because, you know, this is just kind of the tip of the iceberg. Welk Square was eventually gonna happen, that electric company property is gonna be developed, and they all have Chapter ninety-one licenses all the way along there, and we, we just don't have time, quite frankly, to, to really dig into them.
Thank you, thank you for the suggestion.
Great, great suggestion, Bobby.
And I would say that, um, that's something that, uh, our committee is very much interested in. As you probably are aware, the, um, NIR has marked Harbor Walk. You know, you go down, you see the wooden signs for Harbor Walk, this way you can walk along Candle, um, New Whale Street, and, you know, down to the beach, and, and, uh, they've done a good job of marking it. Same with the Yacht Club, when the new, uh, Great Harbor Yacht Club was put in. Uh, we, as I say, we're directly involved with the placement of those public way signs around there. It is something we're interested in, we're usually notified, usually Andrew will notify us if there's a Chapter ninety-one, uh, license coming up for renewal. For example, currently there are two along Eastern Street from the, um, uh, from Brant Point or from the Coast Guard Station down that are, um, people have applied for some work. That means that Chapter ninety-one is involved, and we have been notified of that, so we go down to take a look at, at what the situation is.
I'm really curious, is this what triggers a change in the license? You know, it, it would.
Any, anytime there's, there's work to be done. For example, the Land Bank just purchased the property at twenty-seven Easy Street. One of the things that the Land Bank considered before purchasing the property is what are the Chapter ninety-one implications for the, you know, what, what are responsible for? We also have a building there, um, that, that already had a demolition permit to it, and, you know, so, um, there, there are several things, but generally, if there's any work that is being done on the property, there's a, uh, a property down at the other end of Washington Street that has a Chapter ninety-one issue, there are several other, um, places where they're doing work, some work on a bulkhead or whatever. Anytime there's any work, that, that will, uh, require a Chapter ninety-one filing.
I would, you know, we, I know there's a lot of them around the island, I mean, more than I probably even know of.
Mm-hmm.
You know, just, and it would be nice if we had some, either electronic or, or paper, uh, system that if somebody wanted to go review and license, they could at least see the license, because right now, they're very, I, I knew, without calling councilor, having Libby and staff dig one of these things up, if we wanted to look at a license, it's not something we can just put our hands on.
Exactly, and that's what makes it so difficult to track these down. You either have to be notified because there's work being done, uh, but to find where the existing conditions are, for example, um, there are signs along Eastern Street, uh, behind the White Elephant, for example, you see a little discreet sign that says public access and so on. There is public access all the way down to the Coast Guard Station, but there are a couple of places where you have to jump down off the bulkhead onto the beach and climb back up and so on. As far as where those licenses are, licenses are kept, um, my understanding is it's up in Boston, but Andrew was probably a better source of, you know, where that.
I think the Harbor Plan Implementation Committee back in its time.
Correct.
Tried to put together a list, Bobby, so there's a, I'm pretty sure there's an Excel spreadsheet someplace. Natural Resources may have it, maybe Andrew does?
Jeff has some of them, they are not issued by the town, obviously, so we don't really maintain an inventory of them, they can be, sometimes a little tiny. maintain an inventory of them. They can be sometimes a little time-consuming to obtain. I have spoken on a, not regular, but every now and then basis with DEP about them. We get notified, these ones on Eastern Street that you're talking about, if they're the ones from last spring, we looked into them and
Right.
determined that there wasn't really a public benefit that was going to be compromised. And whenever we do get a notice, we review it and check into it. We'd be happy to include you on that, in that loop.
I think it, it sounds like, for example, the Chapter 91 thing. To the extent you review them, it would be helpful to, I think, to the board to know when that review takes place, what notice comes in. It wouldn't be very hard to keep us in the loop, but, you know, Bobby?
And some of these...
I'm sorry. We are in the loop. The town gets a notification from DEP whenever there's a Chapter 91 license that has something to do with, with, whenever there's a Chapter 91 license change being proposed. And we look into it. And if it's something that we think the board should get involved in, it would be brought to your attention. Sometimes the, the changes are, are not expeditious in happening. They, they take quite a while. And when I've called DEP about various Chapter 91 things, I'm generally told, we have hardly any staff, so it's going to take a very long time to get whatever it is that you're looking for. It would be great if the Right-of-Way Committee could take on the task of inventorying them and identifying all, you know, major public benefit conditions.
Right. Because some of them aren't just public way, public access. There are public restrooms. There's fueling facilities. There's marine-related industry businesses that have to be there. There's a lot of things. I mean, there's a Chapter 91 license, if I'm correct, if my memory serves me right, for the Dreamland, that they have to have the bathroom open to the public.
Right, and they do.
I'm sure the Boat Basin has the same thing. But we don't know what those are, how many bathrooms, how many hours. And it'd be nice to be able to have somewhere to go and say, hey, take the lock off that thing because it's part of your Chapter 91 license. But we don't really know what their license reads right now. So it's hard to do.
Well, I mean, we can certainly obtain that. Natural Resources did undertake something of a project to do this a few years ago, but it quickly got overtaken by actual other, you know...
Right. Right. And that's why I always thought that maybe it might be a nice fit for your committee because you have some experience in them before. And we start on them, and then we run off to the next warm, crazy fire, yeah.
Yeah. And I just think more frequent communication like this, Alan, to coordinate the projects. So that the projects we might have interest in are the same ones you would have interest in. You know what I mean? So, not that, not that what you're doing doesn't have interest, but if there's something like this, that, other than this conversation, we might never have interjected it. So I think we need to work on that kind of communication a little better.
Good. We're always open to ideas, particularly if it deals with public access. And of course, if it comes from the Board of Selectmen, we're always interested. We did work with the Harbor, the Harbor, what was it, the Harbor Plan?
Harbor Plan Implementation Committee.
And that, that was, that came off of whatever the Harbor Plan Group was. And then the Implementation Group was the Chapter 91. And that's where we did, we, we worked with the chairman of that committee. And this was maybe four or five years ago when we were doing some of that work. But I agree with you. I think that that is really a key. You know, as we see nowadays, as the price of land goes up, we know that it's, you know, people don't like to, you know, if they're spending millions of dollars on houses, they don't want to have the riffraff there. And it's important to keep an eye on.
Yeah, yeah. And we're the riffraff.
Well, yeah, people who doesn't...
Riff, your raff.
Yeah. Unless you're invited onto the property, so.
And just to, to reiterate or follow up, I was just kind of reading through the Chapter, you know, 90 requirements and authorization. They're talking about structures and tidal ways and says placement or construction of any structure regardless of size, whether permanent or seasonal examples of typical structures include but are not limited to piers, wharfs, dams, seawalls, weirs, booms, breakwaters, bulkheads, ripraps, revatments, jetties, peels, pyre's, groins, you know, all require a license. So just something for us to keep in mind, you know, just reading off their website. Maybe I'm not reading the detailed lawyer's version, but...
No, no, you're absolutely correct. And of course, remember the chapter, where this comes from goes back to the 1630s, when, you know, Massachusetts, and of course, we included Maine at the time, was a, a colony. And they were trying to get development on the shoreline. They wanted to have people building docks and so on. And it wasn't until later that they realized, well, the public has some rights too. And that's where the Chapter 91 comes from.
It says here on the website, "The colonial ordinances codified the public trust doctrine, a legal principle that dates back nearly 2,000 years."
Yeah. But we, we differ from the state of Mass in the public trust document because we were not part of Mass when Mass adopted it. We were part of New York. So when we came in from New York, we came in under the existing rules that we had. And our rules were such that we had, you know, we set off, we set off a rod to the ponds and, you know, and the beaches and everything else. So we were not part of Massachusetts. We are not bound by those. Now, a lot of the lawyers and everybody else claims that we aren't, but we are different. And I think that's, you know, when we go to do, you know, and some of that has to be remembered. And when we go to do takings, like you said, with the roads, it'll be really expensive. Well, it, it might be. But at the same time, it might, it might behoove the owners to donate that because they can make, they can get more tax benefit. We're going to take, if we decide we're going to take something, we're going to take it anyway. We're going to price it based on, you know, our historical precedent, historical use, et cetera, you know. And, you know, and we're going to take, we're going to take it anyhow. If they actually in turn donate it or donate an easement, they can put a large number on that. It's justifiable. So there is a way to work, it's part of the whole idea of one big beach. It's, is to work cooperatively to obtain something that, you know, you could, we could obtain it another way. But cooperatively, the owners themselves make out better. And so I think part of this is educational so that they, you know, A, they get shamed into it because they understand what Nantucket is about and how we viewed it. And B, they have a huge benefit from it. You know, so I think there's, you know, you sort of have a carrot and a stick, which I think we need to promote more and explain.
Well, I'll definitely be sure that Rose and Right-of-Way Committee takes a look at whatever we can as far as Chapter 91. And also in terms of any other potential access to the water. Because I say, those are, those are at the top of our list as far as public access.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Thanks.
All right. Great. Well, thank you. Thank you. It's been a very interesting evening, both Mike's presentation and this. So thank you for the time.
All right. Brian, you are up. Sewer Projects Cost Update.
I love all this public trust doctrine discussion.
It's very fascinating. It's interesting. I'd like to know more about that history, Matt. You know, that's, be something that our town council should, you know, maybe look into, you know.
I have a box.
Yeah.
Unless I, unless I gave it to you.
You gave me a box of something.
Ah, so I may not have a box. I may have offloaded it.
Yeah. But, you know, that's, that's all interesting points. But I, I know of us who's living in Massachusetts, so. Brian?
Good evening.
Sewer.
Sewer. Everybody's favorite topic, right?
It's very fascinating.
So what you actually received in the packet for tonight, I know it had been asked for a couple of times, and we had put it together, was a comparison of the recommendations that had come out of the Sewer Planning Work Group at 50-50. And then what the, and what the differences were between what you had voted on the 6th of October, I believe it was, at 60-40. So we put this together to just show, a lot of the interest was around the betterments, to show at the 50-50, when the Sewer Planning Work Group had voted, we were using, we were not using 0% interest. We were using 5% interest on most of the projects and for, for that. We were still using an 80-20 breakdown, but we were using interest on the entire project regardless of the cost. So when you voted in October, we had very good knowledge that we were actually going to qualify for the reduced 0% interest, which is where the majority of this came from. Because we had taken 80% of the project costs and assumed no interest on them over the life of the loan. So this is really informational so that you can see that even at 60-40, there is a reduction based on, versus the 50-50. And the primary driver is the assumed 80% at 0% interest. Okay. If you want to pull that up. What I've been working on the last few days, the new one, yeah. Did I send you? No problem. So I've been working extremely feverishly to try to get this done. Unfortunately, I had a misunderstanding about some of the parcels, so the assessor has to redo some of the land values. So the sheet before you actually uses the, the last certified values, not the most recent certified land values. But it's to try to give us an idea of where these costs are headed. The, during the Capitol Program Committee and at a subsequent Board of Selectmen meeting, you had asked us to review the costs. This sheet now has the most recent updated cost of the project by area. Matticat Warren's Landing, originally when we had started this whole entire process, had been assumed, had been projected to cost 47 million. Based on timing, we've projected that when we get to doing it, it's going to cost us $61 million to do. Somerset originally had been estimated to and projected to cost 14 million when we get to do it, which will be, I believe, in 2017 is when we program that in. The assumed cost at that point is 17.5 million dollars. Every project, as you can see, has gone up. The original costing, when we had presented, when I presented back in October, was 95 million. It is now 119 million, which is $24 million increase. I've programmed this to be the same 60-40 split that you have, that you had voted. I'll use Matticat Warren's Landing for the example. Total betterment cost now is estimated to be, based on the previous land values, is 68,000. In October, it was, I have to go back to that sheet, was $52,000. So the costs are increasing significantly here. I hope to have the new land values hopefully by either late tomorrow or early Friday morning. And I can update that to get a better reflection of this. The tax impact at the bottom is actually calculated with the new valuations. This, the only piece that hasn't been updated is, is the land value. But this is just...
But Brian, is that really just a distribution issue?
It will be more of a distribution issue internally. And depending on where the averages fall, it could change them slightly. But...
Brian?
Yes?
Talk to me about the tax rate per thousand.
Yep.
Is that per 100,000?
Oh, yeah. So that's $6.14 per 100,000 of value.
And right now, our tax rate is what?
$3.31 per thousand.
Per thousand?
Right.
So what's that? You divide that by 100 to get what the rate's going to go up for each one of these projects?
Can you put your mic right here?
Yeah. So actually, if you go into that sheet, I can actually, the, no, if you actually highlight 32 through 40 on the side, right here, yeah. And then right-click and click on hide.
Good.
This actually shows the actual impact. And then I broke it in into per 100,000 dollar valuation to make it easier for people to, to divide the total by the, their assessed value by 100,000 and then multiply it by that. So...
And this is down here is the average value?
That is, that's the old average. I have not updated that from the assessor. But that still does the same thing as adding into the new, the new valuations.
So if we did all four projects, what's the...
The, all the way to the right. If we did all four, the, the impact on 1.6 million average, the assessed value would be 205 in October. When we did the 60-40, it was 194.
Okay. So scroll up to Somerset for me for a minute here.
Sure.
Because we're, the betterment for Somerset, the Somerset area is going to be around 41,000?
Uh, well, that's, no, that, that's showing you what if we had divided it equally, we are actually using the land valuation. So you're looking at the 46,000.
So it's 46,000 per...
For an average. That's the average of...
Roughly per household. So they're going to pay $2,400 per year for 20 years.
Yep.
Where they can pay it all at once. Plus, once we run the pipe, they got to pay the hookup fee, which is what, car? 2,000. The privilege fee, which is how much more? How much? 63. So that's 8,300. Plus the privilege fee? Capacity fee. Capacity fee. Is there another fee? Or is there a third? Or is it just two? So, so, and the only reason we're doing Somerset is so we can get zero financing. Is that correct? Because it gives us a zero financing. We don't need to sue.
I think that's the real...
Well, the other...
Because I'm just looking at this list of homes and I'm going into the warrant and looking. And it's Meadow View, it's Marsh Hawk, it's Friendship. It's, it's all our year-round neighborhoods. That all these residents are now going to get hit with a, an extra three grand a year for 20 years, plus another 10 grand that we're going to mandatory tell them they got to hook into this pipe. So that the people in Matticat who have the collapsed sewers, septics that don't work, can get a 0% financing.
I, I, I don't think it's quite...
You're going to have a heck of a time selling this at a town meeting.
No, I think we are. But I don't think it's, if we, if we sell it like that, we're dead on arrival. I don't think that the...
That's how it's going to be interpreted, I think.
I understand. But, but the, the reality, though, in Somerset, I had a house in Somerset in that, what would have been that area? I was in Austin Farms, and my septic failed three times in, you know, 12 years. And I spent 50,000, 40,000, what, some huge number back then. I don't know what it would be today to fix it three times. So a lot of, so there are people, not every single person, Bobby, I agree with you, there's going to be some that probably have great systems working fine. But there's a good swath there. That, the ponds are having trouble there. And there's a good swath of homes that were in the same situation I was.
I think to get this even to have a remote chance, somehow or another, this has to be tweaked to say that once the pipe's in and in place, your system is inspected annually. And you don't have to hook in and pay all these fees until your system fails. Because there are people in these neighborhoods that have perfectly working septic systems that they maintain and aren't that old. It's going to be really hard to get the votes at town meeting. If you're going to tell them all of a sudden that you've got to abandon your working system and come up with 10 grand right off the top the first year, and then another 3,000 a year for the next 20 years.
Bobby, I, no, I understand. That's why, you know, I've been concerned about adding Somerset in the first place. And interest-free may, may make it economically, you know, so that you have to do that. But I'm, I haven't seen the trade-off. You know, as if you do charge interest and skip doing Somerset, what happens? Matticat would pay more.
We'd all pay more.
Well, we'd all pay more. But, and another way to think about it, in terms of the hookups, because we talked about this as maybe a border health issue. It seems to me that, in trying to think about it, it's not, I think from the board of health's point of view, it's in the public health interest to require hookups. Whether fees are charged is really up to the sewer commissioners, I think. So there are two different, you know what I mean? There are different issues there. So the sewer commissioners might be able to do something about fees, which is us, yes.
Don? Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but don't we have to run the pipe through Somerset to get to Matticat anyway?
We do.
So maybe we just need to do some tweaking with...
Well, we do, but we don't have to run all the little...
When people have to connect and so forth.
We run one line down Bartley Road. We don't have to run it up into all the neighborhoods and stuff.
Well, the idea of doing all the sewerings is to improve the water quality. And the only way to improve the water quality in the Matticat end is to take the systems off of, out of the ground and connect everybody to sewer.
But the, the systems on Bartley Road are not going to improve the water quality in Matticat.
Right. But they are in...
But they're making, they're being, they're being forced to hook into a system. So the people in Matticat can get zero finance.
No, their, their area does affect the Hummock Pond area. So they, they have impacts as well.
And then some of those, some of that is in the, is in the, when you go over a certain line there, isn't some of that in the harbor watershed?
Mm-hmm.
Once you go over, over a certain line in Myakomet?
Yeah. The needs areas are because they, they impact the water.
So, so there's a lot that, there aren't, there are a lot that don't, but there are a fair number that do as well.
I'm just saying.
Oh, I agree with you.
Especially in a 60-40 split, you're going to have a hard time. One, one number I, I've thought about tonight, and this is for you, Brian, more than anyone, I think, is, because as you say, Bobby, when we don't do these things, they go up 4% a year, et cetera. And then eventually you have to do it, and you kick yourself because you didn't do it. One number I would like to see, or, you know, we need in our Q and A, is what was the number if we did it without 0%? Say we can't, we don't vote either of these at town meeting. Everyone gets up and they all want theirs. And, you know, everyone's yelling and screaming. No one can agree on anything. We don't vote it. What are the numbers without 0% plus inflation? You know, what are we going to be looking at three years from now when the state gives us a consent order and we have no choice and we have to do it?
Well, what we would have to do is, these numbers here, so Matticat Warren's Landing has been, has been costed using about 4% all the way through the project start date estimated of 2019. So 61 million is what we are projecting it's going to cost by that time. So the only thing that's really going to change would be your betterment and your tax rate. Because we'd just go back... because we'd just go back in and plug an interest rate in instead.
Exactly, but so, but, but the number could be, we were saying, what was it, eight to, probably eleven?
It would be substantially higher because you're adding-
Zero percent financing is gonna be about eleven million.
Yes.
And then you're gonna add four and a half percent on a hundred, you know, on a hundred and something million dollars. So you're gonna be talking of twenty, twenty-five million dollars to push it off-
An increased capital cost.
An increased capital cost to push it off one year. I think, it's gonna be in that ballpark.
I get all that.
That's important that you'll explain.
I know that for myself personally, the, the issue right now is, is the downtown harbor, the town harbor. And the water quality in the town harbor is much worse off than the water quality in Maticet. And this is a big pill to swallow, just so we can get zero financing. We're trying to do everything at once, which I'm not always, I'm not necessarily against, I'm just saying.
We gotta understand it.
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot, it's a, you know, their tax bill's gonna go up a hundred and thirty-something dollars a year. Now, they've got a betterment for the next twenty years, they've got a hookup fee, a privilege fee that we could possibly waive if we decided, but we're still gonna have to come up with that somewhere else.
If we, if we set, once we set these numbers, they're set, and if we waive it, then it's either gonna come out of the taxes, or it's gonna come out of the sewer, sewer group.
Rape.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think anybody-
And which, which, they've had, part of the reason that it was gonna only go on these two places is because those people had already faced huge increases over the last few years.
I'm just bringing up questions that are gonna come up when we, once we have-
And, and other people are bringing up that old question, too. If, if I was in Maticet and I put in a fifty thousand dollar alternative system last year, am I gonna get some credit for that in the, in the same kind of question, Bobby? So we, we have to deal with that one as well. Just to be clear, Brian, the Maticet number includes running the pipe all the way to Surfside Road?
No, it's, the Maticet Warren's Landing number as presented starts at the end of Somerset and goes to, to that area. So if you were to remove Somerset, we would, we would actually could go back and do the calculation, but then you would have, the Maticet Warren's Landing area would pay for the pipe at that point from Surfside all the way, and it would be cutting off all of the lateral connections off the other streets in Somerset that would be removed.
I understand that part. Do I remember also that the pipe from Somerset is gonna have to be a separate pipe all the way to the plant? No, where does it connect to the main pipe?
Somerset?
Yeah.
At the Force Main.
So the Force Main is sizable enough to take this-
Which is where on Surfside Road?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Doesn't it cut up through for, next to Sachem's Path?
Yep.
Yep, so it would come down Bartlett, and then go up Surfside Road to, about Sachem's Path and connecting to the Force Main there.
So that's the main connection, so, so if you didn't do-
At the pump station on Manny Dias's property.
So if you didn't do Somerset, you'd have to bring the line and charge Maticet for that cost to bring it over to the Force Main.
And you're opening up the road, and, but you could put the stubs at least out to the side roads if you decide.
Whatever, yeah.
I mean, it's just, I just think of all those people that live in those neighborhoods that are, you know, year-round working-class families, and this is gonna be, it's a hit.
And they're facing a lot. And then the other, the, yeah, and the other thing, this is, you know, we wanna make sure that we position these, you know, if we, if, if Maui, Monomoy is our priority, if that area, Shimo, is a priority, we wanna make sure we do that first, and then do, you know, do Maticet second in the town meeting. I mean, so some of this, we're also gonna need a-
And then you're gonna need to understand the financing if you just did Monomoy versus doing them together.
If that happens, you have to answer that one.
Carr, can I ask you, like, the plus section for Monomoy? Those are all little areas in town that got somehow left out of sewerdrift, but the pipe mostly runs through those areas already, right?
They are, they're nearby, yep, they're very short connections.
Yeah, so those, those, those aren't gonna have, how much was it to do the plus section?
Thirteen million.
So it's still-
And the only reason, not the only, but, but a reason to do the plus again was to get the ratio correct on, for the zero rate.
Yes, Monomoy can't be done without plus, Maticet can't be done without-
To get zero financing.
To get zero.
But Monomoy could be done by itself, Bobby, just Monomoy, which has a different, you know, economic considerations.
But the projects have already been approved together, so we would have to reapply.
And the, and the, and some of the plus parcels are, should be sewered, they wouldn't be, they weren't- They weren't added because we don't need to do them.
No.
Right, that's a, it's a different sort of reason.
No, I understand, but there's, so some, some of those are still in the, you know, in the harbor watershed, or some of them are still budding ponds, and there's still issues with, you know.
I was looking for a list of the plus properties, I, in the zoning bylaw changes.
One note at our group today in terms of identifying these places. Monomoy is now Nantucket Harbor, Shimo, because that's really the location.
Yeah, so people understand where we, what we're talking about.
Because most of Monomoy is already sewored, so it's Nantucket Harbor, Shimo.
We also need a warrant article.
Sorry to interrupt.
We'll need a warrant article for, what is it, deferments? Yeah, so that's another thing that we need to make sure we put on, and we'll probably talk about that later.
What's that, to give us the authority to issue deferments, what, what's the-
It's a local acceptance of chapter, I believe it's eighty, chapter eighty, section thirteen B, which does give you the ability to enter into agreements to defer betterments with a set of conditions, the first one being that if the property's sold, it's required that the betterment's paid off at that point. There's a whole list of questions in, or guidelines in the acceptance of the statute on what you can do, but it does do that. One of the things we do have to work out, as I had talked to the, the group this morning, is doing some of these things then still does require us to find a, a secondary funding source if the goal is to keep none of this in the, in the sewer rate, because when you vote sixty forty, it's, the, the forty percent is set by, if, if it's passed that way, would be set for what we could, for the project cost and the tax rate. If you defer betterments, then that dollars, those dollars have to be made up somehow. So it, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't do it, I'm saying that that's one of the things we have to think about as we move forward with that, that discussion.
Unless you can find a way to ask the deferments to be, to, to show themselves, you know, they ask for the deferments prior to setting the tax rates, prior to getting the numbers to set the tax rates. If you have the deferments, you know, by a, a date certain prior to that, then it, there's less of an impact.
Right.
And it's the same if somebody has a very valuable lot in, let's say, Maticet, and, you know, and they're like, well, I just wanna keep it exactly the same, and I don't wanna ever do anything else, and, you know, and they're not, you know, they don't, may say they don't qualify for the deferment, there may be an opportunity to do conservation restrictions or envelope, you know, envelope restrictions on the properties to bring the value down. But we wanna know, if that happens, we have to know that prior to doing this. So that, you know, so there's some major, if someone is really agreed-
So that changes the distribution?
Changes the distribution, so you wanna do that, you wanna do that first.
That would change the distribution within the area, a deferral would change how we're, what, where we're getting the funding to do it for.
Yeah, and in most cases, if they've got a really valuable property in Maticet, it's probably, you know, there's probably a good, it's probably large, and it's probably, the benefits are probably gonna way outweigh the huge assessment they're gonna get. But if they don't wanna do that, we may wanna have an option like that for people.
Right.
Any other questions?
Only other comment is the first screen, we didn't really talk about it much. It is, it's, it, it doesn't matter, it, it sort of matters now, but the, you know, I didn't support the sewer planning, like, I didn't support going to, you know, to sixty forty because I was worried that it was gonna change those numbers substantially, and, and as we kinda suspected, the numbers were still, for an individual property owner, the numbers were still less because of the zero percent financing.
Because of the zero percent financing.
I'm not sure how, we're gonna meet with the sewer planning work group, even though they don't exist anymore. And one of the things we have to remember is there's sort of two sides to this. We have people who are on septic who don't wanna pay anything. And so, you know, what the sewer planning work group was doing was trying to strike a, you know, a fair, you know, a fair reasonable balance that would work for both, you know, for people who are on septic and not on septic. And, you know, Duel was, Duel and, who's kind of representing the people who are in Tom Nevers, et cetera, in areas that will never have to be sewered, you know, they have a strong contingent of people who don't want, didn't wanna see it all on the tax base, and he was the lone vote. So maybe your sixty forty split would appeal, appeal to him, so you, we still have, it's very difficult.
But it's not just him, I think it's also, even people who are on the sewer but are not in the district, so people on, lots of people. And I, I think in a raw numbers basis, there, we gotta be practical here, there are more people in that category than are in the other category, by a substantial number, is my guess.
Yeah, I, I'm one of those people that's in the septic system zone that's never gonna see a pipe, that I personally don't mind paying a hundred and thirty-three dollars a year to have clean harbors, but I look at the guy that lives in the area that is now gonna have a pipe go by him. I'm paying a hundred and thirty-three bucks, he's paying four or five thousand a year, plus he's gotta pay eighty-five hundred when the pipe comes by his house. It's, it's, that's the guys that are gonna be standing up screaming bloody murder.
I mean, the reality is if they have to put in a brand-new system at some point, it's probably gonna be more expensive than these numbers.
Ernie, how much is a regular septic system?
Brian, fourteen to twenty-five.
Yeah, not everybody needs to put a Title V system in. All those people in Somerset and Monomoy, they're not gonna need, I mean, in, on Bartlett Road, are not gonna have to put in a, a Title V system when they upgrade their system.
You mean an alternative system?
Right, a lot of them, all they gotta do is put in the expansion field, they don't even have to change the tank. They just have to, just, you know, disconnect the old one at the D-box and run the new trenches. So there's a substantial difference here, and they're not really getting anything out of it. They're not getting an additional bedroom or an additional dwelling or anything like that. They're getting, they're getting a big bill, and they're gonna be the ones that-
Why wouldn't they get additional bedrooms?
No, so, you'd have to go lot by lot, there's, some will get nothing, some will get substantial benefit.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's gotta be something in place to address this, so-
Well, I think it's just something, I'm just bringing it-
It can make sense for everyone.
Because we need to think this all out between now and April, because otherwise, we're gonna have a steep hill to climb.
Mr. Chairman, speaking of which, at the group mentioned today that, that met, we talked about, sort of a kickoff meeting about our public outreach, not really kickoff, but a continuation. So just to let you know, an update about that. What we discussed was getting out an FAQ sheet, a direct letter to affected property owners, a newsletter, and a presentation outline. The presentation that we're talking about, we're, we're in the process of sort of identifying groups that we will go to or invite to us to discuss what the proposed projects are all about. At your February workshop, we already had scheduled the review of the two thousand fifteen water quality testing results, as well as an eelgrass survey that we talked about several months ago, a staff water quality update, and we would like to put on the agenda as well, a discussion about these projects or an overview, a review of them, and invite various groups to it to ask questions or express concerns or whatever, so that we can know kind of what they are and be able to address them. And we did get an email yesterday from a citizen who was asking specifically about public outreach, and he had some good questions about it, one of which had exactly to do with the septic system issue. And we talked about that a little bit at our meeting today, because that's probably going to be one of the things that people really have concerns about and questions about, so we should have some-
You mean where they have recently installed systems?
If they were recently installed.
No, I know that's an issue in Maticet, so.
Exactly, and so, just so you know, we, we have begun this, we talked about doing a kind of a panel discussion on NCTV or something like that, we talked about going to the Builders Association, other various groups, the Civic League, Maticet Civic Groups, Town Association, things, things like that. So just so you know, we've started that, and we'll be keeping you posted as to how that's going. We hope the newsletter will go out next week, as early as next week, hopefully.
Anything else? All right, good first start. Hate to be the, I didn't mean to be the pessimist here, but-
No, you, we need, we all should be.
Just the increase in cost is by itself a number.
That's hard enough.
I just, I know, I know a lot of those working families that live in that neighborhood, we all do, and I know, I don't wanna be the one to look them in the eye and tell them they gotta pay.
We haven't even talked about the maintenance of this new line, staff that's gonna be needed to look over that and the implications of the long-term budget.
But, but you also, you have to realize, like, the numbers we have here, we're look, what is it? We're looking at tax impact of on a hundred thousand, are we almost doubling it? If we put it all in, we'd be almost doubling the taxes, wouldn't we be? It's, it's like seven eighty-four, tax impact was, you know, seven eighty-four, and that was at that split. So, and if we're at, what, three something per hundred thousand now?
Well, we're at a hundred and thirty-three thousand, a hundred and thirty-three dollars at a forty percent split for the average home.
But you, you can't, you, you, you can look at that, but then there's a lot, you have to also look at, the easiest way, I, I look at it slightly differently, I look at, because some people own more valuable homes, some people own businesses, and you have to say, let's just make it a simple, let's say our tax rate's three bucks, and it's gonna go to six bucks. It's, and it's gonna be three dollars, that's a hundred percent increase, so it's gonna double. If the thing is three bucks and it's, and it's gonna be six dollars, you're gonna be tripling everyone's taxes. You know, so that's, you have to look at it, and that's, this doesn't count the school and anything else.
Oh, I know.
So that's, you know, it's sort of, people have to realize, we, we were, there's sort of a misconception that things are free here, that the rich people pay and, and stuff is free. Well, we've gotten to the, you know, I was, been warning about this for fifteen years, we're at the point where it isn't free anymore, you know, and this, and, and people have to realize there isn't any, it's not an easy decision, you know? Like, it was kind of that way, it isn't that way anymore. Things are gonna be very expensive, and we have to try a way to mitigate it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I just wanted to mention, back to the public outreach for a second. The Sewer Planning Work Group had a section in its report about public outreach. We went over that today, and we'll be incorporating a number of the components that are in there into our plan. And one of them that Dawn mentioned earlier was, they noted, and we've discussed this, too, that the neighborhood names for the needs areas was, was very confusing. So Monomoy isn't exactly Monomoy, it's really Shimo. So we, we sort of titled it, and we're gonna put it in the newsletter, so we should start calling it what we're, what we've retitled it. And Shimo isn't really Shimo, it's Shakamo, so we've renamed that, Nantucket Harbor, Shakamo. Just, just so you, so you know, and we'll get that into the literature.
Okay. Libby, we're gonna move on to the warrant.
Okay, you, you, I think, received today an updated draft warrant, which already has changed. I think I got a number of things via email today that I was not able to look at yet, that aren't in here yet, but I can, I can kind of go through and identify with you what, what is in the works right now. I think I sent you a copy of an email that I've sent around to different staff people about what is still needed, and so some of that has come in, and some of it is, is, we're still waiting for. So I guess maybe the easiest thing would be to go through the, the warrant. Last week, I mentioned that we were working on updating our seasonal salary schedule in Article Seven. I think I have that now, but I wasn't able to get it in here quite yet, but that is coming. The, there were three airport articles, which I think one is coming out, and I may have gotten the wording on the other two today, but I haven't had a chance to get it in yet. The school article is still being reviewed, I don't, I think we talked about it last week, but we didn't quite have it in yet. That's being reviewed by legal and bond counsel, and we need a Department of Revenue, at least by town meeting. We'll need a Department of Revenue okay on the article.
Is, is this to increase the, the bond?
Yeah, yep. The sewer appropriation articles are being reviewed now by legal and bond counsel, and Matt, you said earlier, maybe we oughta switch them around in order?
Yeah, in order, and maybe put the other, the deferment article prior to them. You know, so, and we have a discussion of if, if these further pass, this is how we're gonna do it, because that addresses one of the concerns people have.
I think we should do Monomoy in front of Maticet.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so-
If we're gonna come up with anything to help address some of the year-round people who will be really burdened by this, is it going to require some kind of an article?
No, if we're gonna accept the deferment for, I think it's age and income.
No, I mean beyond that, for people, or is that a board of health?
I don't know if that's some, I don't know, A, I don't know if we'd have the, we'd get it done in time, but I think it's almost a policy decision. She's talking about an article for help.
Help, help address these concerns that are- Help, help address these concerns that are going to come up that might make this whole effort, you know, not pass.
We could move, I don't know if this is one of the things you mean, but the, there were, we have two articles in right now that relate to sewer betterment assessments and the length of time and the interest rate. And the home, there's a home rule petition that is sort of a fallback in the event that legislation that Representative Madden filed, which I understand is pending the governor's signature, in the event that somehow doesn't get signed before you approve this, we'll have that in as backup. But there's also an article in, in the event that it does get approved to accept the general law that will result from the home petition, so we could put those two here.
That's the same issue.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's the same thing.
Okay, I had a note on, what's numbered is Article 20, about whether or not we could combine that article into the FINCOM motion to the revolving fund article, and I'm advised we should not do that, so that'll be a standalone article. Article 22, this is kind of an FYI for the board, you're gonna be getting the county, uh, budget at the end of the month, and that one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar number is going to change as a result of a, um, increase to the county budget relating to, um, some takings that we should set aside damage awards for. Article 24, I'm waiting to hear if we need that or not.
Linda, be back to the county, that's assuming the county does the taking, so the county would need access to resources?
Correct.
Okay.
Can we, um, can we just stop on the CPC articles for a minute? I just have a question. Under housing, I see a request for, uh, housing Nantucket Phase Two of four community rental units at Surfside. The CPC appropriated two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand dollars to this, but they've withdrawn their 40B application? So I'm a little leery about authorizing them to get two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand dollars' worth of housing money that they're just gonna sit on. At the time, you probably didn't know that when they came to the CPC, so...
Yeah, it just came up.
We might, I don't know if you're gonna...
Well, Mr. Chairman, um, we've invited Housing Nantucket to attend your February third meeting to discuss the status of that project and probably that issue. That would have to be dealt with in a FINCOM motion, anyway.
Okay, but I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention.
Linda has maybe an answer?
Because they have, I guess, tomorrow formally withdrawing the 40B request, the pocket 40B, I have asked that, um, the matter be put on the CPC meeting next week on Tuesday to discuss how we're going to resolve this.
Okay.
And I believe Andrew can speak to this better, but the, um, property is in the zone that would be affected by what we passed at the special town meeting, where they could avail themselves of sort of a pocket 40B under the new zoning bylaw, which means they would come to the planning board and they can go back into the four units. So we're gonna try to work this all out within the next week.
All right, I just didn't want the money...
Right, but so then you might want to keep the money if they can do that, right?
That's what I'm saying, if it, if it works out.
And that's fine, I just didn't want it to be, you know...
When it passes the town.
Sitting dead, yeah.
While they're waiting.
Yes, there's a current article from us.
Yeah.
There's a current article from us at town meeting that would allow them to avail themselves of coming to the planning board.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I actually have a conflict with that property because I'm a butter, so I did not vote on that funding portion.
I just, no, I know Linda, in the past, where we've given them money and they've sat on it forever, and I just soon, if that's gonna be the case, I'd rather pull this out at town meeting through a FINCOM motion, and then they can come back in a year when they got all their ducks in a row.
We would certainly, probably the CPC would support that. There's just so much unknown right now, that a lot of it hinges on one, something else happening.
I just wanted to bring it to light, so...
Yeah, we, we're, we're on top of that.
We're gonna, we're gonna hear from Ann, my understanding is they planned to do it, but they couldn't, they didn't have the money or the wherewithal to do all four units now. But if they tried to do all four units, they would have, they'd have to get a CO on the whole thing.
They decided not to fight the resistance at the ZBA, um, so they backed off to two.
All right.
That's where it was left.
All right, I'm good with it. I just want to make sure we're just not putting money into a bank account to sit there for a while, so. Okay, go ahead, Libby, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm still waiting for, I don't think I've gotten yet a revised article on the coastal erosion liability, then we'll need the board to determine...
No, I talked to council, they're drafting, but I don't, I haven't seen it yet.
Okay, the remainder of the zoning articles, I think, are still getting finalized and reviewed. Yes. I, I actually didn't print out the version that is up here, so the page numbering might be a little bit different. But Erica, if you can go to, I think somewhere around page fifty-five-ish. Last week, we were, I told you, we were working on a bylaw relating to transient housing. This is the so-called Airbnb issue. Roberto gave me a draft article, it's being reviewed by town council, so that is in.
Well, who requested this article, just out of curiosity?
Um, the Lodging Association requested it, and then you all had a bit of discussion about it and said, "Let's see what it looks like." So here's what it looks like.
It's three pages.
Last time, last week, we talked about eliminating the requirement to print the warrant in the newspaper. I'm, I'm waiting on an article from town council for that. That actually is going to need to be a charter amendment, because that provision is in the charter. Oh yes, I struck that other part out. The sewer district articles, um, we, I think I mentioned this last week. We have the different locations in different articles right now. There, I think there are four articles in right now, we're gonna combine them into two. And maybe we should, and I, we do have Monomoy now called, um, what do we call it again? Nantucket Harbor Shimo in first. So that, that would correspond with what we just did with the appropriation articles, right? So we'll make sure that stays like that. And then Matwick and Somerset could go second.
I didn't see the plus ones in here.
It's, it's in there.
There's a lot of Matwick ones.
It's around page, well, I think it's somewhere around page sixteen, is that it?
It's after the Matwick, oh yeah, I see it here.
It's right after, um, what's titled Monomoy right now. So those are, uh, those are getting reviewed as well, and...
Libby, I just, I just wonder, after the discussion about the sewer, if maybe the, you know, if the appropriation and the maps might be together? You know, so, um, they're not separated, you know, in different sections?
What are you guys thinking about that?
If you don't put it in the district, why would you appropriate it?
Well, yeah, that you might have your appropriation article and then the sewer district after that, so, so they're kind of co-located together. Obviously, we're having a, I mean, I think, you know, the main discussion is about appropriation of the money, and if it's appropriated and it follows that you're gonna add those properties into the district. But it might just make sense to kind of group those together.
I was thinking the same thing.
Almost two out of the zone, so we do, we do the appropriation, then we do the addition to the district, then we do the appropriation, then we do the district, then we do the rest of the zone later on.
In a, in a different spot.
Kind of makes sense.
In that way, you mix up the zoning articles, it makes it nice for people.
Well, and you also, we have to think, what are gonna be the popular articles? And, and, you know, if you want people here for the, if you want more people there for the sewer stuff, you want to make sure you place them right.
Well, they're, they're pretty early in the meeting.
They are, I know.
Okay, so we'll do an appropriation and then a district, and then an appropriation and then a district.
Yeah.
The sewer betterment assessment articles I mentioned, and th-those are in here now, but I'll move those to, like we just talked about. The water company merger, I think I'm still waiting for a final on that. There are some home rule petitions for land bank real estate transfers that we've approved in the past, and there might be a new one, I'm just waiting for a finalization on those. Airport real estate articles, I think I now have, or, and so I'll get those in. Forty Sparks Ave. and Forty-two Nobedear, I didn't have anything on those. Do you know about the merger?
Uh, town council's writing the Forty-two Nobedear, and then Sparks Avenue. I think there was a question, Libby, if, there's a citizen article that's already been submitted, right?
Yeah, um, so, actually, I skipped the Community Housing Bank, so let me get back to that in a second. Forty Sparks Ave., I think was on a list at one point, but I think the discussion was, if there was a citizen's submittal, then we wouldn't put one in. So there is not a town one in. Unless the board wants to put one in. The Community Housing Bank, um, I can't even remember if I got, I think I got a revision from last week in here, but it is still under review, and the formatting needs a little bit of work.
And, and just to clarify, the cutoff on the recommendation, is it in here in typing? In other words, is it for transactions and only the amounts above X, two million, three million?
It was two million.
Is, and so are we comfortable with two, three? I mean, you know, I guess it depends how much money you think you're trying to raise. But I just want to make sure we all know what we're doing here.
Yeah, I, I was, I was wondering why two million. I was thinking it could track the, you know, the five hundred and track the, you know, five hundred thousand and track the exemption they use now. And we talked about it being on the seller, we all talked about it being on the buyer's side, but then it's written, I think, on the seller's side. So there were a couple of issues that I thought...
Right, that was another issue, but, but I think when this originally came up, the idea, Matt, was to charge, you know, the higher-end properties, and that's why it was two million and up. I think that may have come from the original...
It did, it did.
And I'm just, you know, with inflation, should that be three? I'm just sort of asking.
Oh, I, I think it should be, at, at the minimum, I think it should be a million, because you look at the numbers and how much you raise, you know, if you're just doing two million, I think it was, you, you, Tuck could tell us what, it was, how much was it at two million? What was it projected at, was it two million?
Yeah, Tucker Holland, first, I want to thank the land bank, who've been very helpful in helping produce together. And they did an analysis on a two-million threshold would generate, would have generated two-point-five last year in a year where the land bank generated twenty.
Yeah, okay. And so, if, so if we dropped it to one, we could do an analysis, it might generate substantially more. And if we were, and part of what I was trying to do was, it wa, it was written to be about only for sewer that's gonna be used for the, uh, for the pro, for the affordable housing. I think it should be, I think part of how we get this passed at the, at the state level is to have this be able to fund sewer in its totality. Uh, you know, with some, some threshold, some percentage, you know, fifty percent maybe of the money has to always go to affordable housing, but, you know, some other percent has to go to sewer. And I think that would help, uh, it would help us at the state level, because they know it's an unfunded mandate that everyone's having trouble paying. And I also think it would help, uh, you know, in regards to our sewer project. If we all of a sudden were bringing in another three or four million dollars to a year or more, and some of that, a good amount of that goes to sewer, that brings those numbers down pretty quickly. You know, it helps, so I think there's a couple of reasons that it should be a lower number. You just have to be careful, you just have to be careful that we don't just assume we're gonna get three or four million dollars, you know? We could have another recession like that.
Yeah.
And there are a lot of indicators out there that say that this is gonna start to go the other way, so...
So, so, so your point is that's, that's a reason to go lower, or what do you mean?
Well, no, I'm just saying, we...
To don't lock onto the number?
Don't, don't lock onto the number, and don't spend the money for sewer improvements that we think we're gonna help defer this mega cost, you know, we can't, we can't, it's not a set thing.
Yeah, you only get what you get, I totally agree.
But I, I'm talking about, when we, when we did this last time, there was a strong real estate lobby in Boston who was against it for anything, because they were hav, they're having issues.
And they're gonna be there again.
Well, yeah, they will be, but they're, they're less, they may be less likely to be there if it's for, if it's for infrastructure and things that their industry needs, if it's, you know...
But they're also looking at this going, the first town to get something like this, it's gonna open up a lot, all the Cape towns, especially when you start adding sewer into it. I almost think you're better off to leave it, I don't know, maybe just leave it housing? And say, "We're unique, we have a difficult situation here with very expensive real estate. We can't live in the town next door." They might, it might have a little better sell, and when you add sewer into it, now you've take every town on the Cape and say, "Well, well, look what Nantucket did, why can't we do the same thing?"
Right, unless the town's on the Cape, want it, and help get it passed, but that's another issue.
Which may be a whole nother route to go, but, you know...
So, if I can just say, I, I think a lot of great work, like, is going on behind the scenes with town council, bond council, like, this thing can be ready to go. There really are three business points, I think, that need direction from the board. You're talking about one of them. It would be the land bank's, uh, uh, recommendation, what you just said, Bobby, like, to keep it simple and focused is gonna be more likely to sell at the state level, is their advice. Um, but that's...
You mean that's on the use of the money?
On the use of the money, yeah.
Just to be sure, yeah.
So, the, the three business points that, just clarity from the board would be helpful on are, you know, do you like the one percent, is that the right number? Is, should it be on the buyer or the seller? Because I've heard mixed viewpoints on that. And the land bank, again, from their opinion, would be on the seller, would be preferable with the two-million-dollar, uh, exemption, and they think that would sell better. And then the sewer flexibility issue.
Now, the, the question is, is it gonna sell, I mean, I'll be cynical for a minute, is it gonna sell better or is it gonna give them less complaints from people? Because they're, you know, it's sort of, we, we have to look at it from our perspective. We have to look at it from the town's perspective, not just the land bank's perspective, so...
Yeah, I, I think they're just trying to give their best advice, you know, given having gone down this road before.
Yep, I understand.
So again, we need to decide if it's two billion and up or not, right? We need to decide how the money is gonna be dedicated to be spent, for sure. And what's written in here right now on that? Is it all sewer, or what's, all affordable housing?
No, it's all housing.
So it's a hundred percent affordable housing?
And it specifically sets up an, an organization with board members to handle it, like the land bank.
You mean to run the bank, or, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a separate board, it's elected, it comes from the affordable housing the first year and all that stuff. Got you.
It, it sounded like, I mean, obviously, there's gonna need to be staff and office things and stuff.
Yeah, you always get worried when the first thing out of their mouth is to hire people, but anyway...
Well, it sounded like possibly the existing land bank staff could...
You're not gonna do this with a bunch of volunteers. You're gonna need an administrator, you're gonna need a staff. It's gonna turn into the land bank all over again. You're gonna be spending a couple hundred grand a year just to keep this thing rolling.
Yeah, but this is why I thought it was easier, if we tagged it onto the land bank, they're already collecting it. At the end of the year, if, you know, if, if the buyers pay it, and they're going after the buyers to get their money anyway, we put a little bit, half a percent more at a million or whatever the number...
Collecting, it's the easy part.
The money comes out of the transaction, no matter what.
Yeah, but then, then we funnel it. Like, we, we, you collect it, it comes to the town, the town funnels it to, you know, Affordable Housing Trust or, or where appropriate.
Yeah, but that's, that's not, like you said, collecting, it's the easy part. It's where you spend it on. You've gotta have someone who goes out and actively looks for the right piece of land. Then you've gotta have someone who negotiates the price, deals with the PNS. Now you've got a piece of land, you've gotta build a house on it, or what, you gotta, if you're doing prefabs, you're gonna have to order, this is not just, hey, we're gonna have five million dollars here, let's just fix housing. No, it's gonna take a staff, at least three.
And then you're gonna have to monitor who these houses are going to.
The way this is written, this is a funding agency, so it's not a developer. So it would be working through exist, either a private developer or through existing nonprofits that were...
But then I'm not gonna support this, because I'm not gonna sit here and collect a tax to give...